I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. Hopefully, everybody's getting ready for the dang holiday. Has there anybody, has everybody had a chance to review the agenda? And if you have, has there anybody have any conflicts of interest or objections to the agenda that was posted? Bearing none, it'll stand as written. Madam Auditor, would you please read us the minutes of the last meeting?
Don't blink. December 12, 2023, the board of supervisors met at 9:00 AM, Tyra Rosberg, chairman presiding. Members present were Schultz, Dozart, Rosberg, Mulbauer, and Hayden. Minutes of the previous meeting were read and approved. On motion, the board recognized claims for public health and approved claims for all other departments. A motion was made by Mulbauer, seconded by Hayden, to approve the appointment of Nick Dammun as Nishna Bhatta Township trustee. Nick is filling a vacancy until the next eligible 11th. Motion passed unanimously. On motion, do we second the board adjourned at 10:48 AM? Agendas for the next meeting are posted available at the courthouse on Friday, 4:30 PM, preceding the next meeting.
There was a blinker. Does anybody have any addition or corrections to the minutes? Are there any objections? Bearing none, it'll stand as written.
What's the role of the township trustee?
Defense line disputes primarily.
They're levy cemetery and fire. Not necessarily both, but or, and/or, fire, cemetery and/or fire.
Yeah. Called on was for fire department stuff, you know, something of that reason.
They meet twice a year.
Okay.
Typically, twice a year.
Every township has one trustee or?
Three and a clerk.
Three and a clerk or one of the threes?
No, three and a clerk.
Oh.
When we talked to Pat last week and they had, we're going to appoint Nick Dammun. He's one of the trustees and they said, there's a second one that we're going to have to go do down the road. Pat said he was, I think Pat said he was the clerk. But.
Yeah, I think Pat is the clerk.
I think Charroque's got some.
He quit, right?
Helped.
To resign.
And it's a negative tax asking, so they give us money instead of asking the tax dollars.
Or no money added?
Yeah, they just, so that they'd be a zero or negative tax asking, so they got to start paying up to be employed here?
Sure.
Perfect.
What a great idea.
Let's get, let's get to that.
Sign them up.
Who's that? Public health.
I wonder how many, how many catch that negative tax department.
They were at one time.
The negative tax?
Twenty-two thousand.
Really?
How long ago was that?
That's been a while.
Been a while.
That would be before Terry or whether.
I don't, I just can't tell you.
Yeah.
What if they make more revenue off the hostel and things like that?
I would guess, I would guess that by fifteen years ago, fifteen years before my career.
Michael Jordan back.
It was when, what was her name?
Matt? No, before, back, probably.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah, but.
I know.
You used to live out of your place, Terry. Who owned your place out to the farm that you sold?
Landowner?
Gloria Neville. Gloria was the financial person.
Oh, okay. Gloria Neville.
Okay, moving on. To the people in Zoom land, Cindy, I see your name, Patty, I see your name, but we're not, we're trying to get it down in the minutes correct. MJ, could you tell us who you are? Open, it's Michael Jordan, but I kind of doubt it.
And.
We do our sign now also for.
Oh, that could be.
Could be.
Yep, there you go, Maddie.
Thank you.
Ah, thank you so much. All right. Moving on. Yeah, we could have a sign sheet.
We're going to keep it fair, we want to, I'll note that.
Yeah.
What our.
The House attendance, you didn't note in that too?
Yeah.
All right. Just signing, because we don't know.
We know she gets it right. Jane, have you seen this?
I have, thank you.
Okay, all right, moving on to our supervisory report. Jean, let's start with you today.
Okay, had a advisory board, a mental health advisory board meeting in which I've now been put on the board, just listening in the background.
So you're a voting number now?
Huh?
You are a voting number?
On this advisory board. On the advisory.
Your voting number on the advisory?
On the advisory board.
Mental health advisory.
That don't get a vote.
That don't get a vote. Hey, it's a start.
Okay, yes, it's, well, it just gives me a little bit of a seat at the table to kind of be there. So I attended yesterday, what basically, you know, they give all the updates from all of the providers and there's really some in-depth conversations about, you know, the state and how it's really going along and it's directly from, it's kind of for the providers to be able to pass on information for Dawn to take forward to the mental health board. And so the updates, you know, everybody's still working on state mandates and how the state is, Iowa State training proposals, they're still having all these trainings, but I think that it's going in the right direction based on that. The access center in Sioux City is seeing a tick up from, you know, getting people in. Caitlin's going to be here today to kind of give us an update on how we're actually doing here in Crawford County, which I invited her to come so we can kind of have some questions for her, how she feels coming. But one of the things that they're really trying to work on is the over criminalization of mentally healthy people. That's, that's really one of the, the key problems is identifying, you know, someone who has a mental illness and not just putting them in jail. That, that's one of the things in Crawford County, we had the desensitizing training to try to teach law enforcement, you know, a little bit to identify this person's having a mental health episode. And so we need to not just, you know, taze them and, you know, take them into jail. So that was a big part of the meeting, trying to get some training. They wanted to have, what were their names, Joe, and come back again, because they really, really.
And two officers from San Antonio, I can't, I remember Joe, that's the one.
They really had positive feedback from that. They would like to do something similar to that, just to keep that in front of law enforcement. How, how to kind of do that. So it was a good meeting. I want to move over to Howard, but it's going to be a deal to be able to.
Part of that.
Riveting.
Not over criminalizing us.
Next, each field.
Person, they talked about the substance abuse and the reorder of the mental health to behavioral health, is that?
Yep.
They update you on any of that?
The update was more geared toward over incarceration of people with certain mental illness. That's kind of where, where it went. This is just them kind of putting all their information together. It really seems to me like everybody's working together to, to make all of the pieces of the required performances that the state expects. You know, they're doing, they're getting a better job of the referrals, a better job with the questions that you ask in order to get them in. Last week, we also had a meeting with the city. I was just invited to come and hear, you know, about the homeless person that they found living in the park down in the Van Shelder. And they didn't have any funds to get him a room, to get him some food, some gasoline to get him. He was actually trying, I think, maybe to get to Storm Lake, they weren't sure. But, and so when the subject then of homelessness, which kind of has to do, because of the fact that this person was not mentally ill, you know, they didn't have any funds for that. He was deemed a citizen, so they had no money from the LULAC organization or any of those. And so.
Local church.
They, you know, there are all those different avenues that they can take.
Our church has funds specifically for that.
Yep.
Yes.
And I think that that's where, because he's no longer in Crawford County. But I asked Trujo, you know, if he knew where he went, he's not here anymore. But did you ever find anything out from the auditor?
I did, and it'd be best to keep those funds out of the county financial system. If a group is established, they should probably establish a 501(c)(3) to be able to collect and manage their own funds and that way.
The city had the same, and so Kim was at the meeting also. And she was going to, she did a poll of her board on how they felt about possibly running it through one of their, and I, I don't know how that's, I don't have a result to it yet. But we just are looking for those funds at three o'clock in the morning, let's say you find somebody. Yeah. Yeah.
Who's your contact at your church?
Just be your pastor. And our church has some discretionary funds that will give you the pastures and.
So would that be the message that needs to get out there to law enforcement? How to, who to get ahold of, or do they know that, do you think?
I think they know, I think the local policeman.
Because.
Because we had sent them, sent people a long way before. We had had people call us that got our number from the local police.
Would that be something that they could do at 12 o'clock at night or?
Yeah, that would be tough.
Cecil, I talked to Cecil and, you know, he was, he always knows kind of what's going on. He said that used to be back in the day, he could give some gas, some fuel and then the county would reimburse him to get somebody to someplace. And I think that things have just changed so much.
He could because.
I guess there was an authorization somehow.
As county supervisor?
No, 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 as the owner of that, that gas station that he used to own.
Oh, okay.
I think, you know, he was just saying that he used to be able to.
Well, general relief was probably a more funded.
Yeah, because general relief was kind of the word that we thought we would use, but that's why I had to call you to see if that was going to work and then, you know. When Kim was in the meeting, she thought it seemed like something very easy that they could do, you know, in, as a part. From public.
Not if she's going to run it through the county, it's not.
Yeah, well, that would run into some, some snafus there a little bit too, I think. Just kind of how we would keep it straight. So what they're really looking for is maybe just a, some like gift cards that people could, this time of the year, donate some gift cards that the law enforcement could have and check out if they found themselves in the middle of the night meeting. And they also tapped, the gal from TAP was there also, can't think of her name off the top of my head, saying that, you know, the TAP, they could help get people money from, or food from TAP at any time, so.
Does Crossroads do any of that this time?
You know, they were not involved in the conversation, but it's a good call we could make to just kind of try to, it doesn't happen that often, you know, but when it does, you've got somebody who you just, you know, it's cold outside, they don't have a sleeping bag, they, you know, just find themselves homeless right now. And I think that this time of the year, everybody's, you know, real tuned in, giving that person a hand up and they're just at that exact moment, wasn't.
Is that something Westfield could maybe?
Well, Clay was there and Deidre was there.
I mean, here again, I, with the lack of maybe usage of our veil.
Thought about that.
Yeah, because they put somebody up in there short term.
Now, are you talking more just, here's a $50 gift card? Or are you talking actually getting a place for them to stay and meal?
Every situation is a different scenario. Part of any of these talks that you have, you have to know who the individual is that you're putting into any facility, because you don't know, and this kind of came up, you know, if they're escaping from something, you know, and then we put them in with other people.
And law enforcement is looking for them.
Yeah, and, and we've taken them in, you know, because it, there wasn't really a real defined box that this went into. Because even if you had a volunteer that said, well, I'll, anytime the dare night call me, I'll drive them to where they have to go. Did we put somebody in harm's way by putting them in a car with somebody that's potentially dangerous? This person hasn't been vetted on why, you know, for the questions that you ask. So, and Caitlin can kind of go into more detail on it. She has lots of resources if they have mental illness or if they've been abused, you know, different questions that you can ask to find out if there's a service that we already have that we can use based on, but that's a lot of questions. And what, do we call Caitlin in the middle of the night to ask these questions? Do we put them in jail? No. Do we take them to the hospital? No. Do we put them in somebody's home? No. Can we really put them over in bail in a building all by themselves? You know, because Clay, you know, said it's there, you know, we could, but is that really? So we're working on it a little bit.
Maybe the first point of contact should be the, the police. They could vet them and then run, run a check on it and say, hey.
The chief of police was involved.
They're going to either spend the night, have, be off the street in jail if they were needed, if they were looking for them. Or they're going to say, hey, these guys are legit, they're down on their left.
Yeah, right, right. Trying to get to where they could have a home, you know, because most people that come to Dennis and are here because their family is here and they're, they're coming here and they have somebody welcoming them in. And like we all talked about, doesn't happen real often, but in that one instance, you know, especially in the wintertime, you really want to have a way to assist them either with their future travel to get where they need to go or just a place to, to put your head down and get some food.
Did you, did we, with Louise in this at all? I mean, we probably have some programs for, if it would be the homeless.
I did call her from the meeting to kind of pick her brain a little bit, just trying to get all the right people in the room too. So that was just our first meeting. We're not trying to, you know, have a big fund for homeless people because the other thing that was brought up was to say that somebody has a fight with their parents and they, you go and say, I'm homeless, you know, and so we're putting them up in a hotel room, you know. We don't really, you can't, you have to be careful putting them in a hotel room because if they destroy it and it's, you know, on the county or the city, then we're responsible for that. We don't know these people well enough that we're going to put our name on the line to, you know, nine times out of 10, it's just going to be somebody needs a place to lay their head and get some food and move on. But sometimes they might need mental health assistance, they may need to go back to where they came from. But we're working on it. I, I don't think we have all of the answers yet. But it was a good group of people in one room trying to address the situation. We just feel in Crawford County, Iowa, we shouldn't really have homeless people, we should be able to take care of them. That's just kind of what the sense, consensus of our committee was.
Sounds like, I mean, the police or the sheriff's office has to be the first people.
Right. And Trujo was there, kind of, he was the one that actually came in contact with them sleeping down in the Van Shelder at Washington Park and.
Is there any studies or stats that has been brought up in mental health of, they correlate homelessness with mental health and substance abuse?
Caitlin's coming, so she.
Be, you know, interesting, like, do they need substance abuse?
Counseling.
Counselinging as well as mental health, I mean, the kind of the push to behavioral, so.
They're trying to change the title to behavioral health and not calling it, you know.
Potential, if you get them assessed correctly, then.
Correct.
An MRAC, if they had enough beds.
If they had enough beds, that's a big one, if they had enough beds.
But, you know, think, you know, what we're already doing, it just.
And that's where Caitlin's going to come in handy today because she really was excited about the questions that she can ask them to find out if one of the programs that are already out there, that they could, could, you know, be more analyzed and. So be sure to save that question for her.
Yeah, one other thing, we got past a little bit, but I was waiting. When you, when you guys, you know, bring like Joe and those guys back, the San Antonio fellows, I mean, the, the one thing that always sticks in my mind that they, they kind of hammered out right away was that most mental health issues or substance abuse issues that stem especially from mental health and other was due to childhood trauma. And so I would just ask that, make sure that you don't forget about our juvenile detention section. I mean, and even our, you know, boy, them guys were just so riveting. And I mean, that was one of the best information and things I remember since we've been on this.
I agree too. That was something that, you know, the, the gal that, that was on the bridge and rather than, you know, pulling their guns right away, they came down to her level and just said, just come talk to me. And.
That's, that's interesting to bring that up because one of my very first meetings, Randy Coolman took me up to take over ECI. And him and I were there together and they had brought up, they did a report on Mitchellville for the women's prison. And they started at that time doing CAT scans on all the inmates and found out a lot of them had concussions and brain damage and things like that, that they had been in a bad abuse or bad situation.
Absolutely.
And they're realizing that that stems back to these behavioral problems.
Yep, yep, over medication of alcohol and any drugs, you know, relate. Yeah, so the research is all kind of being done and that's why I asked Caitlin if she would come and kind of give us some updates and see what maybe she's found out since our last meeting. And just wanted to let you know that we're kind of working on it. And homelessness, maybe it's the thing, we don't even really realize how many people truly are by themselves without a home for different reasons. You know, it was brought up that some people want to be homeless, they choose to be that way. They don't want to be a society and they've chosen. But there's a side of some of the experts, I believe, that think that maybe that's a form of some mental illness that, you know, you want to find yourself so destitute, what went wrong that you.
Self-isolating.
And, you know, the other thing is the terminology of the normal, who knows what that really is? This, for somebody like us, it's always not normal to want to be homeless. Well, what's the new norm? Because society and so forth. So interesting meeting, a lot of really caring people were together to, to try to work on, you know, you don't know what situations are out there until it's brought to you. And the answer was not an easy one at that meeting. Everybody left there trying to see if, if they can find the right connection to make this not be a YIMBY program, you know, where I just ran away from home and I want a hotel room tonight, you know. So, yeah, save the question for Caitlin because she's coming.
Good.
That was kind of my weekend theme. Tomorrow, we were supposed to have early childhood and they couldn't get a quorum. So that's been canceled, but we're going to get together like January 3rd to kind of keep this going. So I talked to Ned this morning and she got a lot of things in the works too. Postponed it, didn't really cancel, just postponed it. This is kind of a busy week for people traveling, I guess.
Are they worried about their funds drying up?
Little bit, little bit. That's why we're having that meeting on the 3rd, because there's some things that have kind of been brought in.
Probably decat as well, decat.
Decat was not going to be, that's every other, so she was not scheduled. But, yeah, that was a conversation last time. Everybody's going to be creative in giving everything to go, you know, lots of moving parts for all of them. Which is interesting.
Lord Schmidt and Sean Lake.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, so that's my report. I bailed my time.
Okay, well, thank you. Mr. Mulbauer?
I really had a light week last week and things I was going to bring up already on our agenda, so.
Okay. Okay, understanding. Mr. Dozart?
I didn't have much going on last week either. You've got children's imagination station bar on noon, so.
Can sit.
Okay.
Mr. Schultz?
Thank you, Ty. I just, I had a S Center meeting Friday, Cherokee. Full house as usual, 14.83 clients per day for the last month, 15 beds maximum, so.
Say that again.
14.83, so there's some days where they have, be full in the morning and the two leave and one comes back. And so it's just an average number.
Okay, I get it.
Yeah, I was curious because we, you know, we're taking kids from the state of Nebraska, state of Minnesota, VIA. 14 of them kids were member county kids, so it's not like we're keeping it full with just member counties. Steve compared, I remember back in days, we'd have an average of three for the, for a month, you know, three. It's, so then, then the third assistant county attorney for the county of BV was there. And that's what she deals with is just the juvenile part of the state. And she touched on the under 13, if you've been, it's just trauma or substance abuse. You have 70% chance of becoming a repeat offender in the system. So she's starting a program up in BV County to where she's going out to the schools and working with getting these kids into school. Because a lot of these kids that are in detention system are in, parents don't give two rats about them. They're not coming to school and, so she's trying to kind of head some of this stuff off before it gets to this, so.
Excellent.
But like I said, most of them homes are, wouldn't be defined as a normal, normal house, you know.
I think.
One parent or substance abuse within the house already, you know, the parents, so.
I don't think all of us realize what trauma some children go through before they even get into school, you know.
Yeah, like, I don't know if it'd be hip, but should ride on an ambulance or something sometime and just, you'd be surprised what you see and how neglected some of them kids are, you know, just it's.
I, it makes me sad.
You, you can, you'll definitely be able to tell that, you know, these kids will be in the system here soon.
When kids come to school and they're, they're dirty, when they get to school and their hair hasn't been combed and it's obvious that nobody's taking care of them.
Well, and then, which brings me back to school board days. And I know there's a family in Charroque, they homeschool their kid because somebody was mean to them at school, whatever. These kids are running up and down the street all day long. And the state of Iowa has put so many things in play that superintendent can't do anything about it. Or they just keep transferring, and there's kids that are homeschool within the Charroque Youth School District that their school is in Eastern Iowa. So how's that going to work? Who's going to check on them? But that's the way the system is set up and it's, it's failing, it's failing these kids in my eyes.
It's probably.
But the Department of Education sees that, that's the way.
Yeah, the teacher question, you know, are you hungry and are you, are you okay? And that's, that's, you know, not going to say in the back there because they're asking questions.
Then he goes, he wants to have further causes, the studies show that wants, like you said, a 70% chance of going back. And then when they become adults, look, look at the trends for what their crime rates are and it just, it.
Yeah.
Just as a ripple effect down the road.
Well, you know, so we had a long discussion about, and then I made the point, I said, thinking back in the day when we only had five kids here, but all the state training schools were still open. So that's a direct correlation, some of that being pushed into us, which is putting rougher people in the detention system, which is in turn just amplifies the problem more because these kids are being subjected to these rougher kids and so they're, they're idolizing these people. So that just keeps going, so the state's infinite wisdom of closing these training schools has hurt the detention system, juvenile detention system, which it's, it's, until the state figures out where they're going to go. I mean, I, I don't see a time when we're not bumped up to maximum capacity. When there's 30 beds in the state, 10 in Polk and, or 20 in Polk and 10 in Lynn County, they're sitting there empty. So they met a week ago, all the directors, Tony wasn't there, but his chief was there. And they're actually starting to get some legislators to turn their, see the problem here. So the state wants to try to release or working through the releasing them 10, 12, 30 beds. And the S Center said they have, the Ginsburg building is wide open, there ain't planes area, that's all gone anymore. So they've got, they've got plenty of room to expand 10 beds. the Ginsburg building is wide open. There ain't planes area that's all gone anymore. So they've got, they've got plenty of room to expand ten beds. So they could separate some of these bad actors from just the kids that were in the car when somebody else was stealing them, you know, so it's part of the deal. So but Polk and Lynn said they wanted reimbursed if they gave them ten beds.
Of course they do.
Thirty beds, but that's a short term solution to a long term problem. But Iowa administrative code states, there's only only can be a hundred and seventy, it's a weird number, a hundred and seventy-three beds. So it's administrative code. So they're actually trying to get a hold of ICE Act to get that administrative code changed to two hundred or two hundred and twenty-five, whatever it is.
I haven't really got available.
Yeah. So you see your legislators, at least the ones that listen to you, maybe talk to them about it. Get the administrative code changed. Cheryl really thought twenty more beds would be ideal for the whole state. If them thirty get put into the system. So create additional fifty beds, basically.
Is, is that problem then gonna be staffing?
Some of it is, some staffing, yeah. As we all know, there's all kinds of jobs out there nobody to fill with. But.
But that is gonna be the problem. In that particular job, you have to have somebody that's sympathetic, that knows how to deal with, you know, children that may be having problems. You just can't have anybody in there. That's, you know, that could be more damage than it would be good if that person didn't know how to handle a child who's going through a little something and it has to do with their home life. And they go there and that person treats them worse. Then they just start believing that they are worthless because nobody seems to care.
Yeah, and definitely to talk about more need for counselors. Which is kind of working good because through the rotation of retirements and now we now have a assistant I don't know, they're really assistant director yet, but they're in the office area. Which is an alumni from BV College. So knows the psychology professor very well. So they're actually starting to send the psychologist class people to the Yes Center to.
Oh. It's an experience.
Get an experience and get some of that, make a job settlement and helping with that. So.
That is.
Maybe that's something we could work with all colleges to.
Yeah.
Go to some of these places and I don't know.
A lot of it.
Obviously, a nineteen, twenty year old will have more impact on a thirteen year old. Age wise, they'll be able to open up. I mean, you can't send them to an adult person probably, but you know, you could send these college kids to these juvenile detention places, I think, and be pretty.
They doing the telehealth, the therapist on telecater? Is, would that be something, you know, so that they don't, wouldn't have to travel? Do you hear any about that?
I don't know that, but well, that's something positive maybe coming out of this.
Yeah.
Well, it's nice to see. And my thought was, I said this at a meeting over there all the time, but we've got to start actually instead of being a warehouse for bad kids, we've got to try and find ways to make our you know, help them find their way through the fog, so to speak, you know, I think. And it obviously looks like it's happening.
Alcoholics and anonymous things, you know, where usually the person leading the group is somebody that's been through the system.
I'd say always.
Yep. So I mean, that's kind of maybe what they're looking for here, something like that. Somebody that has graduated.
Tools to cope with the world the way it is. You know, they need those tools that a lot of children get at home. You know, used to be kids would sit around at kitchen table with mom and dad and they'd discuss their day and, you know, and that is not.
I still think core of most of this is the home life.
Some of it is wired differently. You know, you have two children with the same parents in the same environment.
I think that's where our average of three to five kids per month was those that, you know, no matter, it could still be a perfect home life.
Sure.
Things just ain't quite right.
Just something in the DNA, just the.
Well, it doesn't even have to be a childhood trauma that happened at home. Home may not have to be aware of.
That's true. I, I. It's a lot. But while they're figuring it out, there are kids that are being.
I think we've gone so far the other way, you know, trying to everybody stand back and touchy feely and know the point where we gotta start getting in there and start being more proactive instead of being, let's just sit back and watch. I agree.
Was there any brought up in either yours or in yours, Kyle? I had heard that AEA is possibly looking at getting chopped big gun in our schools. That, that was something that was brought up to me and.
That is another thing that.
And to me, those are another eyes and ears on the ground in our schools to catch. Try to be another safety net for those type of kids out.
Caitlin seems to be really in the know on what is available, what's out there. She goes to a lot of meetings, a lot of training, really. She, she had a lot of good resources. So save that one to your book.
The other note is that transportation keeps keeping lights on up there.
Yes Center was brought up in this meeting also, I forgot to mention that. They had talked about the Yes Center and its mission and part of that came up with the transportation, how they would get them there.
Yeah, we had a thirty-one hour transport last month from Nebraska to Michigan.
Really?
Yep. Thirty-one hours straight transport. Sixteen hours. Fifteen and a half hour one way, fifteen and a half hour back.
I have not got a question that comes to my mind just waiting for that.
Well, that question was asked and it was Cheryl was homesick. So we really don't, but means we're working with the state of Nebraska and their juvenile detention system, I think they're down to one facility in the state.
That's right.
Really?
Yeah, because one, I don't know, something happened to the other one and it's closed temporarily or something. But so this person that transported must have been a resident of Michigan. And you say, and you don't know who you have until you get them in there. So
Right.
Either when they got picked up in Nebraska for some reason and we had court orders to get back to Michigan. So.
Court orders.
To get them person back to Michigan or their home, home resident county or area. So you know, it, there's a lot of jurisdictions involved between here and Michigan.
So is Nebraska just basically saying we're just not gonna deal with it? We're not gonna fund it? We're just, you're on your own?
No.
I mean, you're gonna have one facility and you can't get in too bad?
No, I've been, I listened to, what was it, eleven ten KFAB a lot. And I think the one in Omaha is either being remodeled or something going on there. And, you know, typical, about like the Woodbury County jail, you know, just keeps getting pushed back, pushed back, pushed back, line schedule over budget type thing. So. I know Omaha has put that murder, drive by shootings of four juveniles that walked out of the juvenile detention facility because there'd be really nobody there to watch them. So I walked out and hopped in the car and went and did some drive bys, but you know.
What else you got to do? What are we doing this afternoon?
Oh, we've got to do some drive bys. Never, it's just almost sad up there anymore seeing them kids that Plymouth County's gonna have, geez, I thought they said it was like fourteen and then they're now for, till they graduate and go to the adult court.
Just feel like they don't even get an offer to them. They're just warehoused until they're.
Yeah.
They're like warehouse.
Yep. I mean, murder one, murder one.
Yeah.
You're gonna be warehoused somewhere, I guess.
But you know, you just think they just feel like they're so young.
But like we talked last week about Medicare, Medicaid, you know, as long as they're in their local jail, you're, we're on the hook for all that. So these people are Plymouth County could happen to us. We're gonna be on the hook for them people for four or five years until they get to the adult court system.
And at that point, they're dragging their feet to get them busy.
Well, in the state of, yeah, the state of Iowa, like, we don't want them. Because then they're on our.
They're running our bills. If we're on the hook for it, are we sure we're paying our bill?
Yeah.
The general consensus up there was, is the conversation after the meeting went, you know, just everything the state's doing. Pushing back. Our local senator was very well talked about out there.
I'll bet he was.
Huh, that's kind of a trending thing for him.
Yeah. You know, these letters that we have to send, you know, the new budget process, you gotta send all these letters out to the taxpayer and the us as a county have to take it on the chin for the school boards, the cities, we have to pay all that and we can't reimburse that. Which, I mean, we haven't sent a letter, I mean, but still. I said, well, we were talking about just sending the bill to the state auditor, the officer, the Department of Revenue's office. They're like, well, that's a good idea. You guys are questions. I remember we won't get paid, but we never push back.
They don't even know the bills are out there. That's.
Maybe they don't even, maybe they aren't even aware of how much we're paying anymore. I mean, it's just, you know, they're supposed to be paying half of all this juvenile detention. We both know that they might be getting ten percent.
Yeah.
But even if they are, it's taken so long and the people you have to pay to come in every day, how do you run it? When you're not sure how the ballot bill is gonna come and everything is more expensive. The fuel to get them there, the person you have, everybody has taken, you know, I don't just say since COVID, I think that's when you've seen everything just keep going.
That's why we're still in negotiation with the Bureau of Indian Affairs. They can still call it that. Because they were, they're still wanting to renew the contract that was put together back in the nineties. We gotta get that changed.
And how long have you been working on that?
Well, I see, then it goes to the Department of Interior and the, you know, just the bureaucracy gets thrown all around. So we get lost in the shuffle.
Have you been working on that for a year?
No, no, maybe four months so far. So.
Not to me is where your board, like ECI or DCAT, really play key role. And we did, and they did the ASIS study, we set a business rate of the kids, but you get them ice miles and the healthcare and the nurse care consulting, get them started off right.
Right.
It costs us that much less down the road because they're not in our ER and they're not in our jail and we're not paying those Medicaid payments because they're staying six months in our jail. Yeah, it's kind of back to that ounce prevention.
Yeah.
Even the program, you know, why do babies cry? You know, for the new mothers, you know, how to deal with when that baby is crying. You know, if you're the sixteen, seventeen year old mother, even a, you know, twenty-three year old mother and you didn't have nurturing as a child, you don't know how to call, you think, you know, that's why there's so much of the shaking babies and the, you know, babies just laying, you know, their heads are getting, you know, flat because they're not even getting picked up because you just don't have that nurturing and nobody taught you how to, you know, so I think starting when you're in pregnancy to start talking about why babies cry. You know, teach you how to, to be a loving parent. I think that goes a long way with kids that struggle. And I think that it's gotta start there.
I guess I use my time, so you can probably, you can probably.
You got a minute?
I can, I can cover that minute.
Yeah.
Good job.
I just got a few things that all of our, all of our NACO meetings pretty much the beginning of this month have been prepping for the legislative session that's gonna be in February. And I guess what I want to ask, especially because there's three of you with a lot of ag experience and Gene, if you've got anything else that you'd like to say, if you got questions on the farm bill that you'd you know, things that you'd like me to push towards the legislative agenda. They're, they're really establishing that right now. I mean, most of the agenda that's brought there is already getting set, but.
I got two things right off the bat. Getting farmers in fair market equity with the our markets, our packers and.
Packers, yeah.
We're losing money now. Just like, you know, packers are losing money big time. I say they're just not making as much as they were. Just they're not losing money.
They haven't got a record profit lately.
Yeah, that's the point.
They don't make a thousand dollars a day anymore. They're losing money.
Well, I, I like for everybody to make money. For a while, I was doing that in the cattle side, you know?
That's how it's supposed to be.
There you go.
Everybody make a lot.
Actually, I, I would bring up at the FAC conference, I just had my FAC meeting, which is really not something to do with this, but deals with a lot of our stuff because I brought up a lot. I was a panelist for ag and ag transportation. And they asked a lot of questions about our secondary road network and stuff like that and where we're getting money. So like fuel taxes and then different ways to get revenue, you know, with the EV cars coming out, we don't have as much fuel getting burnt. You know, better mileage on cars, they don't burn as much fuel. Gene's not paying her fair share with the Prius, bye.
Cheating the system, Gene.
Anyway, that was an act, it was actually a really good meeting. A lot of stuff was brought up. I sat next to Stu Anderson, the Iowa Department of Transportation, and we talked about different road projects and I always plug a highway thirty every chance I get. But the, you know, I, I, different things that they're working on. We are worried, there, there was a lot of discussion on where the monies are gonna come from, for the maintenance of the roadways in the future.
Well, that's all good, but I wish we would have a better accountability of the monies we already spent. You know, they said, well, I read a deal the other day, they said nine billion dollars on getting electric vehicle charging stations set up. You know, how many we got? So out of that nine million dollars, I think they said it's under a hundred charging stations for nine billion.
Yeah.
Where'd all the other money go? Our money needs to be spent more wisely than we're sending there already.
That, that was one of the, one thing that I actually brought up was our, our fuel.
A small, minuscule amount for nine billion dollars.
That's.
That was, that was something that I did bring up is how we need to be more, we need to quit just focusing on electric. Electric's fine to work on. But we have, we need to have diversity of fuel. I mean, our propulsion systems need to, and then I actually told them about our diesel over electric cat. And the railroad people were sitting just down from me there. And I said, you guys have been since the sixties, the diesel over electric thing has been probably saving you guys in all that time, probably close to trillions of dollars. I mean, in fuel costs because we're seeing two cats work right next to each other all week and fifty percent fuel savings in that diesel over electric. There's another extra bunch of extra batteries. There's enough batteries in there to start that motor for this running the generator that's charging that, them electric motors out on their final drive. And I said, we, we need to look at more things like that. And I said, you know, maybe Iowa, you know, you look at things that, what kind of a diesel or not diesel, but ethanol over electric engine that could propel pickups.
My uncle just bought a hybrid, ran it forward, half done. And I didn't know it was hybrid. Jumped in and gassed it and took off and all of a sudden it quit running, go on electric, but it charges itself. You don't have to plug it in, it charges itself.
As it go. See, to me, that's, boy, look at the money that saves and not having to create all this massive network and it can build as it's the, basically the commercial system can build it on its own as it's, as it can afford to. I mean, we don't have to keep financing all this.
And to roll out electric cars before they're ready.
Yeah.
Is the other thing, you know, you, you buy one and you realize that, wait a minute, I'm stranded because there's no place to, to plug in. And so you want to go back to your old car, you know?
A large part of the discussion too was about the electric batteries and, you know, I do know, I watched a special and I think it was on Discovery, but don't quote me. But there's actually a place down in Arizona that just was recently built that actually is re recycling that these electric, the electric engine or electric batteries for the cell phones, but even for the car batteries, all that thing and stuff. And they actually, I don't know how they do it, but they got some kind of a witches brew that even separates all the different precious metals and when, as they're coming melting down or whatever they're doing there. But it was pretty, was pretty interesting. So that, that kind of reassured me that we actually have some way to so they claim that.
Reusing our batteries rather than like our wind turbine blades where we.
Just throw them away.
Throw them away or ship them down to Texas to bury.
Well, and I sat, I sat in a meeting where Rory actually, the discussion was there that I think, can't remember for sure who actually initiated the conversation. But anyway, Bill, might have been Bill Bruce, that might have been who initiated it. But they were talking about if one car in every garage in Dennison was electric, we'd have brownouts in Dennison and maybe even blackouts.
Oh, yeah.
And now that's just covering one town. So what do we do as a nation? So that's why I just said, we have to have a better diversity of fuel options. And we, we can sure work to get past fossil fuels, but I don't believe the technology nor the infrastructure is in place to actually keep us from stumbling over our own way to begin with. I think, I think, I like the fact that the government's, I mean, I remember when President Obama came out with the mandate for mileage. Came out with the mandate for mileage. I mean, look at the improvements that that made. I mean, now you got pickups there, out there, diesel pickups that are getting thirty miles a gallon. I mean. We didn't ever thought that was ever gonna happen, you know? So I think that, that, them are all positive steps, but I think you gotta take it once, is Paul coming?
I'm gonna text him here.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm eating up more time while you were waiting for him. But I, I think that that was a big thing that, that we, we discussed then was the. Alternative ways and that actually got to be, I mean, like I said, the railroad sits there, the barge people are there, you know, so we've got every type of mode of transport now. Haven't seen the air people that are in my, I believe. So I mean, it's been, it was some really good discussion and I think some positives. Would you please join us?
You're all right.
Hey, remember, when you're, when you're done, if you don't have to leave, you might wanna hang around, we've got Logan Schmidt on, he'll be on Zoom.
Oh, okay.
DGR.
Yeah, yeah, I'll be fine. He's in color. Yeah, about as Christmasy as I can get.
Oh, red on it.
Yeah, you know.
Oh, angry.
Went, went all out.
That's amazing. Feel very festive now.
Oh goodness, uh, a couple of permits, I think these are both going to wells to, you know, there's a lot of, a lot of wells. Struggling right now, so these are both just a couple of private electric service lines, uh, I think to try to hook up a well. So, um, that maybe is an alternate well or something, I don't know, but, uh. That seems to be a lot of hookups with rural water and people doing some different things because wells are going down and getting it out of me, so. Um, the, uh, contract project that's, it's in the letting, we'll, uh, we'll kind of see where that lands and hopefully we'll have good bids. Uh, the shop in Manala, just waiting for them to show up, put the building up.
They just.
Yeah, they probably got other stuff going on, I, I, I really don't know and they have till July to build it, so it's like, you know.
I didn't know the weather was gonna be so awesome.
Well, actually a lot of contractors, if they've got work, they're still working, you know, it's been a great year, so I'm sure they're working somewhere. Great crew they have pretty much shut down, they got two of those miles done over there on D Avenue and they just got a short quarter mile left, but I think we're gonna. Pull things in and have them go work on some tree clearing. Uh, the crypto claw is kinda, you know, it's, it's good, but. You know, most of what we do is ditching and it's really handy for trees and stuff, so we're still, the jury's still out on whether that's something we're gonna do or not, so we'll keep looking at options.
What's the worth of it in cost?
That's about eighteen thousand online. I haven't gotten the price from, yet, so, you know, the ones we saw online were right in that eighteen thousand dollar range. Um, but, uh, when they put yellow paint on it and sell it through, it seems to get more expensive. Uh, they're good, they're good, but they, they do get expensive. So we're actually gonna go down to Shelby County on Thursday and take a look, they've got. Excavator rigged up with a thumb and everything that they just got. They were, Sean was talking to their bridge crew forum and said they were really happy with that, so maybe we can. Retrofit ours to.
They get a new engineer down there?
The other one, we, well, moved on, Brandon, and, you know, I talked to Chris last week, it said Shelby County engineer, I said, so you're the new engineer? He said, well, it's still kind of in. Discussion, so I'm not sure.
I heard Brandon moved on and I didn't know.
Yeah, at least he's, he went on to be an assistant at Pot County, so, um, so I don't know yet what their status is. The, uh, bridge crew, they're just kinda, let's, yard cleanup is fabrication, um. If you do come out to the safety luncheon or lunch in tomorrow, stop and take a look at the bridge.
Oh, yeah.
If you get a chance, yeah, turned out pretty nice, so I'm not sure who's all coming, but, uh, I know a couple of you were not gonna be able to.
Hang and build.
Yeah, I don't know, yeah, so, uh, but anyhow, it's kinda neat, bridge turned out and I talked to Jody this morning, we're, you know, things coordinated for tomorrow for the.
I talked to her the other day.
Yeah, they're pretty pleased with it.
Yeah, they're very, very happy with it, so.
I guess they should all out there.
It, it really is, yeah, probably what those guys did. Um, item four is the, uh, resolution establishing bridge weight limit studis every year. Uh, we got fifty-seven bridges that are posted. Thirty of those are because of the special haul vehicles, you know, you gotta, you gotta thirty, forty-eight, forty-seven, you gotta thirty-one, forty-eight, forty-eight, you know? There's thirty of them like that down here, so about twenty-seven of that fifty-seven are really bridges that. Are somewhat restrictive to, to normal loads, but most of the rest of these, they can hold ninety-six thousand pounds in my process. So, on behalf.
About a hundred and seventeen.
That's probably pushing it on some.
Good guess.
Yeah.
Why make?
Fall proclamation of a hundred and ten thousand, sorry.
Make a motion to approve that, resolution establishing bridge weight restrictions and postings.
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion in a second to establish the bridge weight resolution or any further discussion or questions on that? Hearing none. Mr. Dozart?
Aye.
Ms. Hayden?
Aye.
Mr. Mulbauer?
Aye.
Mr. Schultz?
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
So essentially just, we update this every year, so there were, you know, take off the bridges that are replaced, that were posted and then anything that, you know. Has been posted, the one over by bail on M fifty-five was added to the list, but generally we're taking off of these, off of the list, so. Until that special haul vehicle legislation came on and we had a whole bunch on it, so.
Yeah.
But, uh, SS four A grant, I sent you the email, disappointing, uh, you know, I talked to Ty about, you know. The application that was approved was up in Webster County at twenty miles of some, uh, safety, uh, worked out on, it was like twenty mile segment roadway, they had nine fatalities in five years. A fatality on the benefit cost analysis is four and a half million dollars, a major accident's three hundred and fifty, so.
Yeah.
It's hard to compete with that. Uh, but nonetheless, um, you know, we don't want roads that have nine fatalities or a five-year period either, you know, I mean, that's not something you want to have happening either. Uh, we'll, uh, we, we can dust it off and resubmit it next year. I, I'm talking with Kimberly Horn about the possibility of submitting it for a RACE grant. Uh, the RACE grant focuses more on the servicing of disadvantaged communities than it does the safety, although that's a, that's a. Part of it, but you still have to have a good benefit cost ratio and so, um, we're looking into that, seeing if there's some other options.
So we can reapply in February?
Uh, we could reapply, we could reply for the RACE grant in February. I, I think the, uh, the SS four A is probably gonna be a spring, summer application that you could reapply for and put it in again, so.
Was there only one plan approved in the state of Iowa then? You said in Woodbury?
Well, that was in Webster County, Webster County, that's the only one that I'm aware of that was approved and, uh. You know, I think there were like four, three or four counties that submitted and they were one of them and so.
So they could approve more than one county?
Oh, yeah, yeah, they could approve more, but you know, you're reviewers, you're probably trying to spread, you're trying to find the worst maybe and, and certainly that one had to be bad. That rank way up there and there's a deeper thing that I'll, I'll sit through to find out, you know, where did we not score high enough, you know, on ours and see if there's anything we could do differently and. You know, you don't give up, you just keep on trying to move forward and see what you can do. Oh, we appreciate it, yeah.
What was your estimate on that project?
Well, it was over eleven million total, but nine point two million in grand dollars, so, and we still have. Highway Safety Improvement Program funds, we can get a million dollars there, our STP funds that we can use for the project and, you know, as we get into budgeting and stuff, we'll talk about the five-year program and what projects. We wanna focus on in twenty twenty-five as far as paving projects, cause we'll be able to do something then, um, I was hopeful that this would happen, but. Uh, yeah, we just keep trying.
Trying.
Yep, uh, the luncheon tomorrow, ten o'clock out of Yellow Smoke, um, you're all welcome, um, safety meeting starts then, we'll have, um. Northern Natural Gas, Sheldon Greedy with, uh, Iowa Highway Patrol talking about distracted driving and then, uh. Dana Neiman from the hospital talking about cold weather, first aid.
I don't be there at all.
Okay, yeah, it's fine, we just want to invite you, you're welcome, you're welcome anytime.
It's coming in tonight.
Yeah, yeah.
Welcome for a while.
You want us to?
I, I just need a copy.
You just need a copy.
I just need a copy whenever you're, yeah, so, uh, damage to the hundred and tenth street bridge, I sent you pictures and an email of that, you know. Really like to have someone step, come forward or some discovery of who did it so we can get reimbursed for it. It's one of those things, you know, where. That approach lab would have been fine for the next ten years without any repair to it. Well, now the damage is such that you gotta tear the whole deck off. And so if you gotta tear all that off and you just as well replace timber piling in the abutment, you know, so. It really, you know. Would all of the work that we put into it be associated with the damage? No, there'd probably easily be ten thousand dollars worth of the work that we put into it that would be associated with that. So we're gonna let it sit for a while until we get our crane back and it'd probably be next spring before we can work on it unless.
They go around, yeah.
I mean, right at the road, have a squeeze to accommodate the restricted of that bridge anyway, so.
Yeah, you know, and, and you just like to think that maybe the, the pressure will come to bear and the local people up there to say, you know, who did this, you know, I mean, if you, you know.
But we've got it marked sufficient at the, at the mile sec.
Yeah, it's, it's closed on right now, it's closed on, but our crane, you know, we do have to have some service work done to it, and so we're taking it down to Barrett. And Gallister then, to get some service work done on the crane and, and then by the time you get back, then the ground's froze, you know, you know, so.
So we're gonna have to put either steel or something in on the abutments?
Yeah, we'll, we'll redo the abutment.
So are we just doing the one side?
Yeah, just the one side, yeah. You know, so we're probably looking, if I had to ballpark it, a twenty-five to thirty thousand dollar, you know, project. By the time you, you do all of that, but not all of it's associated with damage, you, you, you see what I'm saying?
This is a bridge.
We wouldn't be doing, we wouldn't be doing anything to it had it not got hit, and now we gotta take everything off in order to repair it, well then we just as well, while we got everything off, we just as well put new. Steel piling in the abutment.
Well, that's what I'm asking, I mean, it's a suspension bridge, right?
Well, it's a trust bridge with an approach, so that, so the trust itself is okay, it's just the approach span that needs to be redone, not the trust itself.
But not something we were counting on doing.
For ten years, right, man, so.
Uh, you know, ballparking it, you know, we weren't gonna plan, we weren't planning on being up there and all of a sudden you got this damage and, and the damage requires you to do some pretty significant stuff, so, you know.
Somebody's got a vehicle with some serious damage today.
I'm guessing it's probably a semi trailer or something that get it, caught it, I would think they would have had to have known.
Sheriff's department doing any investigating?
I turn it over to them, like I do another thing and hopefully they are, you know, so.
Yeah, there's a green trailer, I think they had significant damage, but it could have been a low boy where you.
Could have been the same. And it could also, wait, look, my, my guess was.
Who knows?
If it was either a green trailer that operates in that neighborhood or a fee trailer, because there is.
Could be a fee trailer or something, yeah. Somebody hit it, they know they hit it.
They know, there's no way.
I'm just hoping.
I literally know they hit it.
Yeah, you know, I mean, you turn that into your insurance.
Yeah.
That's where I was just at, that's why I was late here, I was on the phone with the insurance.
Hopefully they were empty when the, I was concerned, I was kind of rich.
That's a good point, maybe they don't wanna come, I don't know, you know, it's like going with a guy. That's the one up by, uh, Sykes, you know? Pour the whole rail off of it, you know, this brand new bridge and, uh. Few months later, he's in talking to his insurance agent, trying to get reimbursed for damage to the implement that in it, insurance takes the whole, yeah, damage to the bridge, so, you know. So it happens, you know, the insurance agent called and said, hey, you know, my insurance in here, it's your bridge, I wanna get reimbursed for some implement.
They might, oh, they'll come.
And so, um, so we ended up getting reimbursed for that, you know, and, uh. So, yeah, I was just on the phone, you know, we had a covert hit over by, you know, bail, that concrete covert that was damaged, about forty-five hundred dollars worth of damage, but you know. If you don't chase after those things, you know, it's easy to push the easy button and just walk away from it, but, uh, you know, uh. I think we have a duty to the taxpayers to try to get reimbursed for the damages.
Yeah, it's the end of the year, maybe they're just waiting to have their pre-tax appointment to see if they can afford to do it.
Yeah, but, um.
Okay, good shit.
I don't know, so, uh, let's stay and work with that. I haven't gotten final pricing on that case crawler yet, but this guy's supposed to be coming, we'll. Kinda try to work on that, we're working on budgets.
More names if you can.
And, uh.
Send me here, don't I?
Y'all have a, I'm gonna have to see around for the pieces, but have a happy holiday, everyone. Yeah, the weather looks good.
Yes.
We continue to get salt in, we're full on salt, same calc, you know.
It's a good problem.
It really is to me, I mean, you know, my goal is to always have everything full, January one, we thought that in a normal year, that'll get us to March first, I mean, it's only sixty days from January first to March first. And, uh, so, you know, generally it works pretty good, uh, but yeah, we're sitting pretty full right now and weather looks good through the holidays so far.
Yep.
I guess we'll, uh.
Well, I know, the later you get in the snow season, the basket melts.
Yeah. In theory, I always remember the first year I started here, it snowed on three inches on November third, it was election day and it never left.
Never left.
I drove home my driveway thinking I, I'm not gonna move into snow, it turned to ice and stayed there.
Yeah, it, it, it stayed the whole winter and, uh, and that was like a, why am I here? Twenty-four years, hasn't been bad, yeah, it's used. Oh, yeah, yeah, Paul, yeah.
He got excited and left.
We see one.
Okay.
I see that. Okay, the next thing on the agenda, try to get Paul back. Can you do that, Cal? Get Paul back, remind him of the water study. Okay, next on the agenda is, uh, Logan Schmidt, he's with DGR in from engineering.
Pardon?
He's gonna take off.
We went after him. Okay.
Done.
That ran out.
Okay, hold on a second, Logan, let me, uh, try to introduce you here. Uh, Logan's gonna do us. We're planning for him to do a study for us, uh, and this study will actually be shared between DMU, Rural Water and us. On our water needs and what we have out there for supply, but I mean, what we're gonna need in the next fifty, well, however, Logan, you're gonna give you all them details, but. There's a group that's been working on this, actually there's, I think Joe's up there, see where the Pretty Little Lake is, that's Joe, I mean, him and Jay Ford have been working on this project since two thousand and one. And I remember when I first came on, I talked to Paul about this, cause it was always something that I've been worried about as well, as far as our water supply and our needs and, uh. So we're trying to work forward here on, uh. Support, uh, support, you know, given the DNR, what they need to help us. Really, uh, solve some of our issues that we have here. So Logan, if you would, take over here, so I quit stumbling through this, trying to explain what you're gonna do.
All right, thanks, Ty, I appreciate it. Yeah, uh, Logan's been here, as Ty mentioned, I'm a DGR engineering, we are located in, uh, Rock Rapids, Iowa, up here in kind of the. The northwest corner of the state, uh, that's, that's where we're headquartered and, uh. I guess just a little background on our firm, we've been around since the, the fifties and, uh. Started in doing rural water, uh, engineering with some of the, the early rural water systems in Iowa. Uh, kind of the, the West Central Iowa Rural Water, uh, Osceola County Rural Water, the, and a few more up here in the northwest corner of the state. Sat in on some of the original board meetings of those, those systems to, to get them off the ground and have been working with them ever since, so. Uh, we have a, a significant amount of experience there in, in the rural water world and, uh. Oh, a little while back, Joe, Joe Lally, he, uh, he reached out to me and, uh. And had some, uh, ideas that he wanted to bring up to discuss, uh, concerns about, uh, a couple of things, uh, flood control in the county. Uh, along with, uh, um, source water supply to, to serve the, the growing water needs of the area. Uh, primarily, I think, um, you know, the, the flood control stems to some, uh, past flooding events that happened in the. Seven, eight, nine, ten years ago, probably, um, some of you may, may know that as well as I, but, uh. Now, more recently, what's come to the forefront, I guess, is the drought that has. Uh, put a strain on the, the water supply in the area. Um, and I, I think I'll, I'll maybe speak on behalf of, of Dennis and your utilities and, uh. West Central Iowa Rural Water that, uh, that, the, the, the drop in the water levels in the, the Boyer River aquifer. And the watershed there have, uh, have had a significant impact on, on the supply that they have to, to be able to meet their needs that, that they're serving. And, uh, so, yeah, Joe, Joe reached out and he said, uh, you know, let's take a look at how, how we're gonna address this and. Now initially, uh, let's, uh, let's look at building a, a, uh, surface water structure and they've, you know, the NRCS did some, some work, I think, maybe. Oh, in the early two thousands where they were looking at areas where those sites could be located and, uh. I think that's, that's a good, a good idea to, to be conscious and aware of that and then, uh. You know, build on that study that was done early, uh, earlier in the two thousands and, uh. You know, build on that study that was done early, uh, earlier in the two thousands and, uh. But I think the first thing that we really thought we needed to do was before we look at where we're gonna get that water, whether that's a surface water structure or a. A groundwater, uh, source, we need to figure out. What are the water needs of the county? And the surrounding area and, uh, you know. We we DGR Engineering work as the consulting engineer for for West Central Iowa Rural Water. And they're in the process, they they not too long ago went through. Kind of a a water need study where they projected out what they're gonna be needing in the next thirty to forty years. Um, kind of based on just historic usage patterns and projections, uh, of that. Uh, besides that though, you know, there's many other needs i- in the county that need to be met, whether that's, uh. Some of the communities that are in the county, uh, the growing agricultural needs that are. Uh, always, you know, we talk about, Ty and I were in a meeting and we talked about the number of. Hog units that have been, you know, being constructed in the past number of years, so, you know, being able to support those. Uh, types of water, water needs in the area, so. So really what, uh, what we came up with was, uh, a proposal for us to kind of dig into that, you know, what what are the. What do we see, not only us, but what do you guys see for for water needs in the area? Um. Can we talk with some of the the folks that are in tune with the the livestock in the area and know. And what do you see happening in the next twenty to thirty years for livestock growth? Um, you know, we we can always look back on past numbers and see what the. How many units are being added, how many head of cattle are being added, uh, annually and and figure out, you know, what more do we. Uh, what do we need to support? Uh, besides that though, you know, uh, Dennison, they're gonna be. Uh, drawing, you know, they've got some, uh, plants, kill plants there for taking care of the the livestock and. Other industries and commerce that, you know, if they were to get a a wet water industry in the area. You know, what do they need to to do to be able to service those those types of things? So, um, I guess what we would really be doing there is kind of working with the the constituents and the stakeholders in the area to figure out, uh. You know, how do we, how do we prepare for? For that need that we see twenty, thirty years down that you don't, or or sooner, you know, we we gotta figure out. What's that growth curve kind of look like and? And at what point do you start to max out what you have and you need to start looking for for more, you know, maybe, maybe the case is you already. You know, in a in a wet year, you're doing okay, but it's those drought cycles where you really struggle, so. So you need to to plan for how do you combat those types of scenarios where you're. You're up against, uh, limited. Precipitation and runoff that supplies the water that you're using for the area, so, so, yeah, I guess. Ty, did that kind of sum up what you think we talked about there?
Good, uh, pretty good, Logan. I I think that kind of covered most of it. Paul, did you have anything you wanted to add? You you were there as well.
Yeah, not really. I think you pretty well summarized it, you know, it's basically looking at your water needs, projections for a twenty-year timeframe, you know.
Yeah, and I, you know, and I think this is, you know, one of those things where you you hope for the best, but you plan for the worst and. And, you know, it wasn't just for what we need for water, but also the flood mitigation, you know, if we've got. You know, potentially if we put a reservoir or something in that would help protect the the Boyer Valley in particular, which has been hit hard by floods in the past, something like that. I mean, all those types of things will be in this study, you know, and. I think that if you look at, if we want to do any development of growth in Crawford County, and in particular, our industrial hub of Dennison. I mean, water supply is always one of the things, you know, usually what you're hearing, especially if we're in a. In if we would, if if state, just say Smithfield wanted to expand or if Monogram would have any plans for expansion. Uh, in the in the harvest facilities, there's always a bunch of water that gets used and they're always looking for ways to obviously. You know, for preserve their water use, you know, and not use as much, but they still have to use a lot. So, I mean, we've got to be able to. Find ways to supply that if we want to keep industry here in in our community and if we want to grow that at at any point, you know, and. And we never know what kind of industries we'll be bringing in in the future. So I think these are all gonna be critical things, and so this is why it's always been something on my radar, and obviously. You know, if you go back to two thousand one, when Joel and Jay started, it's been on the radar for a long time for some people that want to make sure that we're preserving. Things that are important for animal agriculture and and basically human, human sustenance.
How long will the study take and you know what the cost is, Logan?
Yeah, so we've got that, uh, proposed to to the cost to be twelve thousand five hundred dollars there. Um. That I I, my understanding is that would be split three ways between, uh, West Central and, uh, DMU.
That's correct.
Timeline wise.
Go ahead, Logan.
Uh, timeline wise, I think we'd like to, you know. First quarter, second quarter of of next year, start to try to put a bow on at least some of the initial things that we're talking about. It's gonna be a little bit of maybe what I would call an iterative process where there may be times where we need to. Uh, to set up a meeting with, uh, various, uh, folks. And maybe we know a little bit more in tune of the area, of the local area, what the. What the growth patterns they they see, you know, maybe there's a development committee in the area or some of these communities that. You know, we're gonna need to, it it'll be a little iterative, we gotta set up some meetings and work together on that, but. I think our goal would be to, you know, middle of next year, be trying to put a bow on some of this for sure. I don't know that we've talked a whole lot about that, Ty, is there any other? Specific timelines or deadlines that you're after? Uh, I don't.
Well, yesterday's always good for me, but. Obviously, that's probably unrealistic, but I, uh. I don't think there's, you know, I mean, other than to be able to get this process started, because if we don't get it started, it's never gonna happen and. And I think the the recent drought is basically, you know, shown us that, I mean, Rory is for sure, make, you know. Raised concerns about the wells out here along the the Boyer and some things she probably have to be doing even sooner than, obviously sooner than later. And so, I mean, this study really is probably important to preserving, uh, water supplies in Crawford County altogether, so.
Paul, are you aware, has there ever been a water study, needs study done in Crawford County?
I'm not aware specifically of a water need study of the future or. Or West Central Rural Water, and Logan, you may know, you know, I mean, he indicated earlier in his conversation that that rural water had done. Somewhat of a, a, a water need study, but I'm not sure about Dennis and his utilities. I would have to believe at some point.
I would think. Somebody.
They probably had looked at that, uh. You know, and and, you know, what's really, what's what's driving this is two things. Number one. The current dry period that we're experiencing, and number two, the desire to have some sort of water reservoir in the county. That gives us, that's kind of what's driving this. We we've looked into that back in two thousand five. Number of different, you know, potential locations for a water storage reservoir, eight hundred acre. Area and, uh, you know, I think those are the two really things that are driving this. Any other?
Yeah, so just to stem on that a little bit, we, this is, I had this printed off, but it's from nineteen ninety-four, we called it the the framework study for NIP. The NIPCO Rural Water Systems that we conducted, uh. I I wasn't here then, I was a twinkle in the eye at that point, but, uh. Um, this, this actually studied a a pretty large area, um. That extended. You know, from Sioux City down to Council Bluffs, all the way east to to Carroll and, uh, about that area, it looked at a whole. Whole area went to the west, so a pretty, pretty extensive area. And this did exactly kind of like we're talking about here, they looked at livestock needs, they looked at, uh, communities that would be served. Uh, if if that were to come to fruition, so, so to answer your question, we do have some background there, um, it's a little dated, but. Uh, I think it it would be good information to pick back up and.
So can you see, Logan, how accurate they were on their predictions as the, you know, number of cattle or hog feeding. Um, units that they thought were gonna be versus how many there actually are today?
Well, I haven't looked into that yet, but that will be something that we'll look at as as we get into this, uh, it it would, it'll be interesting to see, you know, how. How did those projections, how did they land where we sit?
Well, that's one of the things, Greg, that I was actually concerned about was, I don't see many of our hog alterations depend, you know, going away right now, I mean. The the hog market's a little low right now, but I I mean, I I think that'll obviously rebound at some point and. You know, I don't see any of our hog facilities disappearing, but what I'm hoping. Is because of the new plant and operations, it will actually see more of the cattle confinements, which cattle obviously are larger animals, so water is gonna be. A little bit more necessary, so I I think things like that, when you consider what West Central and, you know, because it isn't just DMU or, you know, Crawford County, I mean. They literally buy water from DMU to to supply the the rural area, which, you know, we're all kind of part of, so.
You know, regarding the the kind of the the livestock, you know, and Joe may be able to answer this question, but I think I've heard that the. The numbers aren't necessarily a whole lot different than they maybe were thirty years ago, it's just that how they're concentrating. I mean, if you recall back thirty, forty years ago, every farm had fifty or sixty cattle on feed, they might have had three or four hundred, you know, hogs. Now it's just concentrated into, you know, larger, uh, fewer number than larger operations. So Joe did correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the numbers are very good, somewhat similar, it's just that. The concentration is taking place.
Great point, great point, thank you. Okay, Logan, did you have anything else?
No, not, uh, nothing else on the study, I just want to thank you for your time and consideration there, we look forward to. If this goes forward, helping you guys out as you look towards your your water needs of the future.
Anybody else have any more questions for Logan before we, uh, say thanks? I will tell you that the boards, uh, West Central and DMU have already approved their their portions of it, so. That's why I said, I I've been telling Joe and Joe kind of wanted to keep this, you know, under hat until we actually. Knew we were gonna go forward with some stuff, so I've been kind of silent, so I can keep a secret, there's proof positive here, but, uh.
I do think this is also gonna be additional good information for potential pipeline usage of water.
Sure. Excellent point.
More than just one area.
You bet, excellent point, thanks. So at that, at that, I would guess I would entertain a motion to approve the expenditure, what what it was in.
Hundred and twelve five.
Forty, hundred and sixty-six dollars.
And sixty-six, sixty-six, sixty-six cents.
Sixty-seven cents.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Dozart and seconded by Ms. Hayden to approve the. The water study, our chair of the water study, do we have any further discussion? Very none, all in favor states so by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Okay, next on our, Logan, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you, great, great, appreciate it. Thanks for hanging around, Paul.
Yep.
Joe, did you have anything you wanted to add, I guess, before I dismiss this, you you've got your funding from us, so you can proceed.
Uh, not, not, I mean, I'll follow up with you, Ty, after the meeting here, we can, we're gonna have to set up another kind of a. Initial kickoff meeting to get this going and, uh, we'll we'll coordinate that at another time.
Okay, thank, how about you, Joe? Must be good. Thank you, Joe, you're you were muted, so, all right, thanks. Uh, next on our agenda is, uh. Gene's, uh. Yeah, this is the mental health side side of things, okay, it's Caitlin Bishop with, uh, Service Coordinator for Ollnells Mental Health District. So Caitlin. Come on up. You get a, sit up front and center.
Well, the last time I was here, I think when last was it December, I think it was before Christmas, so it's been about a year. So I do have some exciting improvements in our services for mental health and, um, just like a little update. So I did pull data on our crisis services, however, they started, um. Collecting data on our crisis services in July, because they go from the the fiscal year and not the calendar year, so my data reflects that. Um, so first of all, I still work primarily from Buna Vista County, I come to Crawford as needed, I'm here, like, for example, last week, I was here two times a week, two times a week. This is my first time this week, um, and I'm still in the Veterans Affairs Office. Um, a couple of things, so our crisis calls, these are coming into our Sack City location. And these are just any kind of calls and our jail is utilizing this quite a bit, which is really cool to see. Um, so again, that's out of Turning Point in Sack City, they had seventeen from Crawford, again, this is since July. Um, during business hours and seventy-five calls after hours. And then MCAT, which could be a crisis call that turns into the team actually physically responding. And dispatching, which again, the jail has utilized, um, we've had nine in total since July. Um, a couple of these were first and suicidal inmates and there were two calls and dispatches in one day. From the police station due to a homeless individual that was needing some intervention there. Um, and then the rest of those, this other seven were public or at home, so, um, it looked like the locations were at the ER here in town. Um, self-reporting, so calling from home or going to group homes, so it would be those staff calling for people that are in, like a Wesco half home, for example. Um. She looked like she had a question.
I'll write it down, I'll ask it later.
Um, and then we go in and that is, um, done by Turning Point, so again, Sack City. We are having a new, um, agency join our calls, so when somebody calls for a crisis, it's going to be picked up by three agencies instead of one. And so it's gonna be seasoned, Sula Mental Health and Plains Area. The benefit to that is whoever is closest and able to respond the quickest is who's gonna come, so that means. If somebody calls from Dennison, they may not have to wait an hour for that person to come from Sack City, they're gonna come from whichever agency is available the quickest. Um, over at Sula Mental Health, um, in the Crisis Center, they started tracking twenty-three hour observation. This isn't used as much because typically when we're referring someone for a crisis service, we know where they're going to go, we kind of. Know what program they're suitable for, so this, um, service is just an observation time where you can kind of. Observe to see where they need to go, so there's only been two people from Crawford for that. Um, in crisis stabilization, we have two locations, one in Turning Point, one in Sioux City. The one in Sioux City has only had four, because most of the referrals will be moved to Sack City since it's closer. We try to keep people as close as possible. So Sula Mental Health had four and Sack City had sixteen. And then three others were accepted but refused to go, so they were referred for outpatient programs at that time. Um, so that's twenty-three total crisis stabilization, that's about a three to five day stay in a therapeutic environment. Where they're meeting with providers every day, so of those twenty-three, um, Crawford County individuals, most of the referrals came from me. Inpatient facilities, the ER, um, law enforcement and the jail, which is really great to see that they are calling and getting people in. Um, and then our new service is Subacute, so they are not tracking data yet, so I have no way to see how many Crawford people. Have been served there. Subacute is like a seven to ten day stay, it is one step. Under like an inpatient hospitalization without the medical component. So, um, this is really unique to have in our region. So I don't know how many total, but I know myself who I have referred and every referral that I have sent there has been accepted, I've had no denials. Since I have started, which is a huge improvement since the last time we sat down and talked, so, um. I have referred six myself, all six were admitted. Um, one was accepted, but I actually chose a different route for that individual after talking through some information, so that would be a seventh. And then two were accepted but ended up needing to go inpatient because they were just needing a higher level of care. Um, the other unique thing that Sula Mental Health over in Sioux City has been helping with is using their service as a transitional service. So what I mean by this is we have, um, stepping stones over in Vale. Which is a transitional living program, people live there three to six months, they help them get everything they need. And what Sula Mental Health has been doing is I can send somebody there to Sioux City and they stabilize them. Before they go to stepping stones, so if somebody is just coming, you know, from the community, they're not on meds, maybe they're not. Where they need to be, they're going there for a couple of weeks, getting stabilized on meds, getting. Started with therapy and kind of just getting in a better frame of mind before going into stepping stones to make that. Wesco's life a little easier with that transition, so that's been a really cool thing that we've been able to establish. Um, so those are our crisis services and then I do my own thing as well as refer them to there. Um, I do service coordination for people who aren't already established with a provider. So I do case management, I connect them to services, I help them make appointments, I refer them to programs. We provide funding for people that don't have insurance or are underinsured, they might have insurance but still can't afford the services that they're needing. afford the services that they're needing. Um, I've had over a hundred clients from Crawford County since January. Um, and a lot of these clients I'm seeing multiple times. You know, it's not just a meet once and be done. So an additional hundred regular clients, I've seen sixteen inmates in the jail and I've had twenty-three at Stepping Stones. Um, on top of the service coordination, I also sit on some boards and meetings in Dennison and Crawford Counties. One of the things I do monthly is meet with the school district. So we meet, um, I think it's the first Tuesday every month and we discuss at-risk students. Um, we talk about how I can connect not only the student, but their family to getting services to kind of help out with the, whatever that may be. Um, so we have like a bunch of key players from the community that come to that. I know Martha Sybil comes to that. We have this school, the law enforcement, Plains Area, we have the Resource Centers and we identify students that are struggling, families that are struggling and we come together to help the family as a whole. Um, so that's been a really cool collaboration that I've done that the last, um, year as well, but it's really taken off and been a huge asset this year. Um, just last week I started, um, attending a new meeting for like a homeless meeting is what we called it. Um, and Jean was there and Wesco Public Health, the Food Donation Center was there, the Police Chief, the Mayor, and we all met and sat down and basically discussed the issue of homelessness and kind of brainstormed ways that we could, um, help them, assist them, connect them to services. And so I was really excited to be a part of that. Um, and I'm excited to see what comes of it since it is so new. Very cool, very cool. Um, the last thing, I just had a couple of key points. Um, one huge thing I've noticed is a big, a, a better buy-in from law enforcement. Roger Rasmussen called me often with cases. He will go out and, um, when he goes to a call, he may recognize that the person or the child has mental health problems and he will refer them to me. So that's been a really cool way to get referrals from the community that might not normally reach out. So that's been, yes, very awesome. Um, and then the other thing is, so when somebody goes to the hospital, which is what we're wanting to decrease is people going to the hospital. We want them going to our crisis services instead of going to the ER. And we haven't stopped that completely, of course, but one thing that we're working on and I'm so excited about, I know you heard a little bit about it yesterday, is our hospitals, when somebody goes in there with a mental health illness or concern, they are actually evaluated by ITP, which is like an online telehealth program is what they get evaluated through. And those ITP people live all across the country, so they may not know our, about our crisis services. And so they just automatically refer them to inpatient. Where ITP will be like, you either are going inpatient or you can go home and that's the end of that. And we lose connection with the person. So we're actually putting in that additional step where they're going to have, um, more information for our crisis services and it's going to be included in the evaluation. So if somebody does go to the hospital, when they're evaluated, crisis services will be offered instead of further hospitalization or just sending them like nothing. So that's really exciting. Um, and the last update I have is our URSH home opened in Sioux City. And URSH stands for intensive, um, residential service home and it is the most intensive placement that we have for somebody. So this is going to be for the people that can't live successfully in the community, aren't being successful in a regular group home that maybe Wesco would have. These are the people that are high needs, high behaviors, probably have multiple things going on like substance abuse or maybe a brain injury or an intellectual disability on top of their mental illness. They're hard to serve people. So we have a male and a female.
When do we start this?
This, I
We worked on it three years, I would guess.
It's been a long time coming.
Agenda every month for three years. But the, the qualifications and the needs indicate all of the moving parts and the pieces together. Every single mental health need, mu- every month there'd be an update. But we never quite got it off the ground because of those extra layers of, uh, need that we needed because they're highly, they're intense. It's not, they're not on their own, but trying to be independent and.
Right. And there's a lot of rules. So each home, each home has four beds and it is staffed with at least two people at all time. So it can only be two clients to one staff, no more, because they are very intensive. So right now we have one female and one male, um, open, or one female home, one male home. And so there's four and I am proud to say that we do have a Crawford individual of those eight beds that we own. We have a Crawford County individual in there. So Sioux City. And he just got there only a couple of months ago. He actually was in Stepping Stones for a while and it was our original plan was a group home with Wesco, but it was kind of determined that he was higher level need than that. And, um, so we are really excited to have somebody from our region because those URSH homes serve twenty-two counties. So to have somebody from Crawford County in there is, is very cool.
How long do they typically stay in their URSH home? Uh, you know, as soon enough you don't.
So it's not like a, you hit this time and you're out, but they do um, guess around two years just because these are very intensive people and there's a lot of things they have to establish and work towards. So, um, eventually, I mean, what they want to do is to stabilize that person and teach them all the skills that they need to be successful that at the end of, let's say their two-year stay, they're able to like work down in the, um, supervision that's needed. So maybe they can go to a regular group home or be successful, maybe with a family member, something like that. So it just, yeah, it depends on the person. Um, some are there maybe a little sooner or can leave sooner, some may be longer. It just really depends on their progress and.
Well, it's so new. That there's not been a tested program that, you know, in two years they're normally, because it's just, this is, this is, there are kind of our, uh, test, test pilots.
Exactly.
The TBI thing makes it just gotta, gotta make it twice as, I don't know, ten times more complicated because you don't know how well that's kind of progressed. So that's excellent that you're not trying to steamroll them through or assembly line them through, that you're actually giving that individual attention because.
Once again, staffing for those homes because there needs to be two at all times. I mean, we've got people spending the night with the people. And once again, they have to have a skill level to know how to de-escalate, you know, these, uh, individuals. What, you know, monitor their medication, uh, so staffing, just like every other, uh, thing we have out there, that's could be a challenge down the road because sometimes these people, you know, possibly could be violent at times.
That TBI doesn't mess with that.
Yeah, don't get their way and, uh, they lash out and, yeah, so it's, it's been a, uh, a work in progress, but, uh, got it open. And it wasn't easy. I can, I can.
Oh, I appreciate you guys doing that. That's really, that's, that's a very underserved portion of our population, which thankfully I don't think it's a large portion of our population. You know, it's hard, I know, and I speak as the VA on the VA side, it's hard for the VA. I think, uh, one up in Minnesota, one in Arizona and maybe Walter Reed. There's very few places in the entire VA system that actually can accompany, accompany a person that's got traumatic brain injury and substance abuse. And most times you got traumatic brain injury, people start self-medicating with it and some of them are already obviously, but, you know, I, so I, I, I do know that there's it's, it's a tough task to deal with that. But when, when you act, it's, success is possible because I've also seen that, so.
Absolutely.
Excellent. I'm, I'm glad that you guys got that. I'm very glad to hear that.
Yeah, and it was, it was really cool too because it was brand new. So he was the second person out of four accepted into the home. It was brand new, just started. But due to, um, other issues, he was the, actually the last one to move in. But that was the first referral that I got to do, so it was a learning curve for me and figuring out how to get somebody in and all the work. So now I feel like I'm seasoned and you know, when there's an opening again, I will be able to jump right on it. The referral process was quick and easy, which is what we want, you know, when we are referring these people. So that's our main thing is we have a ton of great services and availability to our, our individuals, but getting to them has been the barrier until now. And so now these referrals are getting easier, our people are getting accepted easier and that's really, really great.
Excellent. Well, the questions that, you know, they would ask, you know, to try to determine if that's the right service for them. I don't think they had those exactly right in the beginning because more people were being turned away than accepted because you got to question number three and it's like, oh, you have been violent, so you can't come here. And, but they didn't know where to go, so we're back to square zero. That's the place stayed empty for a period of time, which.
And that's a huge thing we're working on is, you know, if they're not appropriate for this program, what alternatives can we give? And we never want to just turn somebody away because they don't fit that one thing. There's always something that we can do, something that we can do to help. So that's really what we've been working on the past year.
And I give the credit to you for, for taking that initiative to, to not take no for an answer and to keep looking under the rocks to see where they can go.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I told you. Last week I said I have a squeaky wheel, but I have gotten the grease and it has worked out. So it has worked.
One of my questions that came up while you were talking is what number, if somebody's at home and having an episode, uh, what number do they call? Are we talking?
So it's, we all, we made it, so it's all one number, which is another thing that was really cool before they were calling like whichever location they wanted to go to, they had to call that number. So now we have just one universal number and it is answered by Turning Point. I can pull it up. I, I have little cards and I, I hand those out. I mean, I, they are down at the jail, they're down with Suzie, they're at the hospital. I give them to police officers and there are little cards that can be handed out and used, but if you want.
Is it an easy number? I mean, so if somebody's at home, you know, and, and feeling like they just need to call somebody, is that number something that, that they can remember or I, I'm just wondering if that number gets out?
I guess, you know, can, I could see if somebody called nine-one-one if they're having an episode. Would a dispatcher have the Turning Point card?
So, um, they're supposed to and our Plains Area Marketing is meeting with law enforcement and schools, like that's their main go-to right now and the dispatcher, so that if they know a mental health component is involved, they could reroute that, that number to the mental health center. And that's what we are wanting to see is if somebody's calling nine-one-one, ask the right questions to identify mental illness so that they can dispatch. Um, right now, I'm not seeing a lot of that in our counties. Woodbury County is really doing a great job of that, but it just depends, you know, a lot of times when you call nine-one-one, they're asking like, are you hurt? Are you, you know, the medical component to see if there is an emergency? So it's asking those right questions to identify that there is a mental component. But, you know, that's kind of like where someone calls nine-one-one, Roger responds, he gets there, identifies there's mental health and then he's calling and referring. So we're, it's getting better. We're still working on that.
Um, isn't the mental health number, wasn't, did they, the national eight-one-one?
Nine-eight-eight.
Nine-eight-eight. Yep. See, they're.
And that's technically like the suicide hotline, but you can also be connected to mental health services through that too. If you're not, you know, if you're just experiencing an increase in mental health and you're not suicidal, they will still transfer it over. So that's kind of what we tell people. If you're in a crisis.
Do we advertise that number? I mean, that should be something that everybody, I, I should be able to remember that. Well, we haven't talked about it again for a while. Nine-eight-eight. And that will get you back to where you were if you called nine-one-one. I don't think they're going to be more trained to ask the right questions about mental health because you called nine-eight-eight.
Correct.
Everybody remember that. There'll be a quiz next week. What number do you call?
And I can get more cards too. I, I hand them out constantly.
I think there are more cards out there because, you know, even like with myself, there's times, uh, somebody might call me and I look at me, I'm like, is it eight-one-one?
Absolutely. I can do that. I can get some more of those. So, and that's one of the things that the region does to support our crisis services. So we pay for their marketing materials. So these cards, their booklets that explain all the services that are so hard to understand. Um, like we pay for those materials so that they can hand them out as they go on those calls. So for example, when they go to the jail.
With you that have all of that laid out really nicely.
I have all of them in my car. I do in my bag. I take them everywhere with me.
But I'm not going to look through it now, but, uh, we can't get too many of those out of the public either because you never know who's going to need that.
Absolutely.
Keep those, uh, those were excellent.
Yes, yep, I can do that. I can definitely distribute more of those.
Do you have any insight into our Director Garcia's possible reorganization and switch from mental health to behavioral health?
Well, you know, I would love to know because it directly affects me. I do know there's reorganization coming, but you know, we're scared of that and we don't know how it's going to change, but I mean, it's always changing. So yes, it's going to change. I don't know what that's going to look like.
Well, if the success you're having, hopefully the change is actually encouraging.
Yeah, our, our policies, like our job descriptions have changed to reflect a lot of extra things to kind of fill gaps. And I think that's one of the reasons because they're taking a look at regions to see how we can change them and make them better. So they're really putting us under a microscope and watching, you know, how many face-to-face visits we're having with people, how much collateral work are we doing with people, how many referrals we're making. And I'm sure they'll use that data to pick and choose what they're going to do.
Look how far we've come in a year.
Yeah.
Look how hard. So I just thought it was important she'd come in and, and give all the good news to us firsthand.
Well, thank you so much.
Absolutely. Any other questions?
You had a question.
Yeah, I think you can answer it through it.
Okay.
Because it sounds like, I mean, they're putting them under a microscope to look at the services, uh, I guess.
Focus the money where it's needed by, yeah.
The only question I had is what age do you start identifying children that are struggling? Is that you start and done it? Kindergarten or only in the middle school or?
So we, we serve any age.
Okay.
Any age at all. And of course, their age will depend on what kind of services that we can refer them to, but we have, um, resource centers and things that work at like early intervention. So they're working with those little, little kids. So there is no age limit.
Sometimes these programs, they're only in the middle school.
Right.
And, uh, I just think that we just talked about this morning. Early on, if you can figure out what's going on, it'll save them from being at the S and or sometime.
Yes. And that's one of the good things about those school meetings. So if we identify, let's say a first grader that's struggling, we take a look at the family as a whole. We see, oh, they have a two-year-old little sister. We better get that family services because that two-year-old is going to be an adult someday. And so we're able to see the whole family, little siblings, older siblings, you know, we definitely can wrap services around everyone and start earlier by identifying the people that are struggling or an adult. We, I meet with an adult in jail and I say, oh, they have little kids. We need to start getting those kids services before it's an issue.
Just exactly kind of what we talked about this morning. So thank you for taking time to come.
Yeah, we thank you Caitlin for coming in.
Yes, thank you guys.
Right, thank you.
Thank you.
Merry Christmas.
Yes, you too.
It's coming.
All right, uh, next on the agenda is the county farm.
Yep, I think it's just time to bring it to light, what we're gonna, that we do, if we're gonna run it or what. I think after a lot of weeks' discussion with everybody, I think I asked Colin to draw up some language that we have in a contract that would allow us to enroll them in CRP. Without being, I don't know, held hostage, not really held hostage, but what we brought and ran into last year where we committed a goal until, because the current runner was under contract once.
Yeah, kind of make the commitment a little less demanding.
But still, we give their props up.
But I don't think I talked to Colin last night and he hadn't got to getting that all.
I don't have a contact for the board today. Uh, one thing, one direction I would need is whether or not the board, um, is going to put anything out for public bid or public quote because there was a, it's an open question whether or not, uh, sharecropping is going to be a public improvement with the county contributing money to its farming. Um, I couldn't find directly, anything directly on point, but if the county's going to contribute money towards that plan.
I think after last week's discussion amongst everybody, we're just going to go with the cash, cash rep basis like we had been.
Okay.
Due to the, I think there is potential to make more money, but you're also risking taxpayer dollars to make that money.
Okay, so I'll get, I can get something typed up, uh, with some verbiage that you sent in the email that would allow the county to enroll in CRP land when that becomes available.
And you can enroll it, what, you have a detailed subject for, is that what we're doing?
Waiting on your farm.
Waiting on your farm bill, Ty.
Yeah, put that at the top.
Oh, yeah, I mean, if nothing comes out or if it ain't susceptible or liking, we, we just won't do it. We'll just continue to do it on the path that we have been.
All right, I'll start now. So if we could get that.
Then we'll have to put out public information regarding.
Sure, next week, fine.
Yeah, let's review it next week and then, because then we'll have to actually advertise for it, so the process to get it run is time to get it run.
Yeah, I understand. Anybody else got any further questions on that?
No action taken.
Thank you. Thanks to everybody that's working on that. We appreciate it. Um, Charter Oak Cemetery Transfer to Charter Oak Township Trustee's issue.
Yep. Here again, just something we've been working on for a year. a year or a time to get cleaned up. Talked to the trustees, current trustees this morning. They said that'd be great because they're resigning.
So there's a draft that out there. I have one that says draft on it. Do I need to bring over a clean copy?
Yeah, it's just a, just a simple draft that transfers our ownership to them.
I have it. It's right here. I mean, it's got a draft on it, but I can go remove this.
Yeah, I mean, we're going to pass and do it. Just well, clean it up.
It's a take action.
And we can take action on it. You can bring it back and.
Let me, let me, let me make sure I'm clarifying how this will all transpire now because I actually know the one trustee that'll be left. Now, the cemetery will come under their preview instead of the county.
They will own it. They will own it. So that will allow them a certain level of levy.
Okay.
The township will own it.
Yeah.
Yes. Currently, the county owns it.
So they'll be in charge of hiring caretakers.
They do that already, but they're just not getting the money for it. I mean, other than a few graves that we've had to go locate, they, they take care of them homey.
They are getting the money. The money is in an account that they need to transfer to the township. They were told that probably a year ago and nothing's happened. So hopefully with new management potentially of the township, we can get all of that organized for them, help them. Whatever. I can't do much because I'm not them. So.
Is this the only cemetery in the county that it has this situation? Right, that the county owns, not the township.
Um, we own the old one, the.
Down by Aryan.
Down by Aryan, the.
They call it the pop or cemetery, whatever.
It used to be part of the county farm.
Right, right.
Oh, okay.
We own that. But there are no new burials there. I mean, no one's getting buried there currently. This just cleans it up, I think.
It gets it to where it's supposed to be.
Right, yes.
Yeah.
Why was it ever that way?
I don't have.
Well, something happened back in the nineties, ninety three or ninety six when some transferred somehow. And that's when we ended up with it. Because I think there was a disintegration that was managing it. And I think if I remember back, that's when them members of that association all passed away or the last one finally said, I don't know what to do with this. Give it to the county. Okay. So this just gets it back to the township and trustees to manage that.
Okay.
They want it now.
Okay. So I would entertain a, I guess a motion to uh, transfer funds. Is that what it is?
No, it's a transfer of a cemetery.
Transfer the entire cemetery to the management of the township trustees.
I just want to see a copy of what.
Yeah, we started this and Colin did some research and there was.
There was that reservation on it.
Atwood to have that reservation.
That we upon more research found is not applicable anymore. So that, that was holding us up a little bit.
I will move that we transfer the Charter Oak Cemetery to the Charter Oak Township.
I will second that.
Okay, there's been a motion made by Mr. Dozart, seconded by Ms. Hayden, that we transfer the township cemetery to the, or.
Charter Oak Cemetery.
The Charter Oak Cemetery to the Charter, Charter Oak Township trustees. All right. Any further discussion? Any, all in favor state so by saying aye.
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 Any nays? Care votes aye. Next on the agenda, uh, Children's Imagination Station twenty eight E agreement.
So, uh, twenty eight E, yes. So I talked to Alan yesterday. So upon first review, this is an, actually an amendment to twenty eight E. So it's going to be a little bit different. So twenty eight E is already unfiled. It's already been passed by resolving by the board. So I don't think the board needs a separate resolution, but just to take action on the amendment, I think will be enough. Uh, one thing that I did miss at first glance, is this from Alan? Oh, this is a quick one. Is the twenty eight E is for the um, imagination station is in equal parts between the county and the city, the school board. Here's that quick claim deed. The amendment is fine. There's one typo where the sharing costs between the three parties was written in the co, the amendment as thirty three and a half per party. Which could you over on a percent? It needs to be thirty three and a third. Uh, I talked to, I called Alan yesterday about that. He said he was going to get me, get a clean copy out. I guess he never said, did he send it to you, Craig?
I, I have not seen it.
Okay, so I would just, so here is. Okay.
Different copy.
Here is the twenty eight E. What I would recommend then is just chicken scratch out the thirty three and a half and put in thirty three and a third. And then we'll just use this as the hard copy for the other parties. I mean, other than that, the amendment seems fine.
So it's just changing the, the rental rates.
Yeah.
That's all it's really doing.
Twenty existing twenty eight E, yes. And then afterward, Alan did say he would file it with um, the Secretary of State. Yeah. But I would, before signature and passing, I would chicken scratch out the thirty three and a third and make it thirty three, or thirty three and a half and make it thirty three and a third.
Thirty three and third.
Yeah. Otherwise we have an extra half percent in there.
He says it.
You can chicken scratch with the.
There's my chicken scratch.
It's like a rooster, dude. Oh, you know, you know what? We got some more on the other page here.
Yeah, there'd be three, three crashes.
Need me to initial that I spoke or Dave again since he scribbles?
Some more housekeeping.
I make a motion to approve the Children's Imagination Station twenty eight E. The amendment to the twenty eight E agreement.
Second, a motion made by Mr. Schultz to approve the amendment and seconded by Mr. Dozar. Any further discussion? All in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
I'll pose no. Care both sides, motion carries. Okay, that's all done. Board President, yes, that's down as a community school. So it's that board who signs this?
Yeah, we'll pass this around to the other entities.
Do I need to sign here?
You're in the middle, Ty.
Yeah.
Lord Chairman.
Yeah, kind of, there's the header kind of floats, but yeah, you're in the middle of that.
The blue ink. And the date is the nineteenth?
What, nineteen? Forty three.
And as Martin, you've got a spot to sign there. Okay, quick claim. We got that here. So I'm going to sign that quick too. So that's done. Uh, public notary, carry your view then, or we got to have one of your.
My offices.
We need to have them present while we sign. This has been approved. We consider it well after the meeting then. Okay. Jean, are you still a notary?
I thought about keeping it the.
Okay, next on the agenda is uh, Mr. Blaisman. Could you come forward, please, sir? With the compensate board, compensation board recommendations.
The Crawford County Compensation Board met on December thirteenth, twenty twenty three at eight thirty AM. Members of the compensation board are myself, Ted Blaisman, William Ranniger, who is a board of supervisors representative. Marilyn Edelman, who represents the sheriff, Glenn Barn Grover, representing the county attorney. Steve Almer, representing the auditor, Don Lyon, representing the recorder, and Corey Kerning, Kern, who represents the treasurer. After discussion from the, the board representatives and input from the department heads, a motion was made and seconded for a ten thousand dollar increase for the elected officials. In other words, board of supervisors, the sheriff, the county attorney, the auditor, recorder, and treasurer with a seven hundred and fifty dollar stipend for the board supervisor's chairperson. That was passed by a five to two vote. All members of the board had received a spreadsheet showing comparison and wages from the other counties. It was noted that the electric, uh, that the elected officials here in Crawford County lagged behind comparable counties of our size. Now, I can't speak for the other members of the board, but I looked at the two counties just below our population, Iowa and Clay County, and the two counties just above our population, Jefferson and Floyd, to come up with an average salary for each office. Crawford County seemed to lack, lack uh, considerably behind the average of this salary. And therefore, uh, the ten thousand dollar recommendation does seem justified. Now, as to the sheriff's salary, there seems to be a considerable amount of friction on the recommendation of the ten thousand dollars. As you remember, the back the blue law was passed in twenty twenty one, which states in setting the salary for the county sheriff, the county compensation board shall set the sheriff's salary so that it is comparable to the salaries paid to professional law enforcement administrators and command officers of the state patrol, the division of criminal investigation, the department of public safety, and the city police chiefs employed by cities of similar population to the population of the county. Although the law mandates restructuring of the sheriff's salary, it does not specifically spell out how the compensation board will come up with the dollar figure other than to take in consideration um, the other uh, comparable officer salaries. At the uh, twenty twenty one compensation board meeting, which was held December twenty seventh, the board recommended a forty percent increase in the sheriff's salary. At the twenty twenty two compensation board meeting held on December seventh, a twenty six percent increase in the sheriff's salary was recommended. In those years, as well as the current year, all compensation uh, board members had the same salary comparable spreadsheets to come up with a decision about uh, the salary, salary recommendations. Again, I can only speak for myself. But uh, how I came up with this recommendation for the sheriff's salary, I looked at the four counties similar to Crawford County. If you compare the sheriff's salary for the next two counties of similar, smaller population, Iowa and Clay, and the two counties of larger population, Jefferson and Floyd, their average salary was about a hundred and, hundred and six thousand dollars. Crawford County's uh, is paying the salary uh, for the sheriff of ninety four thousand, nine hundred and eighty three dollars. Uh, about ninety five thousand dollars. The compensation board recommended a ten thousand dollar increase, which would bring the salary close to one hundred and five thousand dollar mark. Which I feel was a just recommendation. In an email from the Crawford County Attorney, he stated it is the plain language of the bill which lists a specific comparison to police chiefs of cities of similar size of this county. For Crawford Counties in your past, the direct comp had been Johnston, Iowa, whose police chief makes approximately a hundred and twenty five thousand dollars. And looking at the uh, twenty twenty one census for Johnston, Iowa, which is in Pope County, their population was twenty four thousand, one hundred and ninety five. Crawford County's population at that time was sixteen thousand, one hundred and ninety three. So I personally don't feel that that's a justified uh, comparison. In conclusion, the compensation board is made up of seven civic minded individuals who spent a considerable amount of time studying all the information that uh, that was presented to them to come up with what uh, the majority, excuse me, majority bill was a fair recommendation. I believe we recommended what the law of the state of Iowa requires. It is somewhat disheartening that after the conclusion of the board, of the board meeting, to have one of your uh, department heads yell across this room, you're breaking the law. You're breaking the law. Again, I believe the law was followed to a T as required. Now, one other point. I received an email last night from the sheriff's representative, which also sent uh, that email to the other comp board members to request another meeting to discuss the sheriff's salary. If the majority of the board requests such a meeting, I will by law schedule another compensation board meeting. If there's uh, any changes, uh, I will report that back to the board of supervisors. Do they have any questions?
Thank you, Ted.
Very good report.
Sounds like a lot of time.
This is, I mean, this is my first year, but um, I liked how you gave your answer, I guess, as far as how you came up with what you came up with. That seems like the biggest question that I had the first time that we went through this last January. It's like, where did they come up with that? I know from your answer specifically where you came up with that. So thank you.
Okay.
A lot of time was put into it this, this time. I talked to a couple other representatives and.
Got some detail.
Yep, got some details. So thank you very much.
Thanks for doing your due diligence and.
Appreciate you.
Working with them on the grounders about staying by my, giving you work with them.
Well, I as well did. I did a discussion with Mr. Lyons last night and he felt that there was a lot of in-depth process of coming up with what the entire comp board thought was fair. And um, he was very much against reconvening the comp board because he thought it was voted on and done justly.
Okay.
Who did you talk to, Dave?
Yeah, Don.
I saw Mr. Kernin also and a lot of time was put into the thought. So we'll take that.
It sounded like, actually it didn't. I mean, I, I suspect because of the back of the blue, it might have even gave the comp, comp, compensation board, uh, you know, a little bit more urgency to, to, to do more research and make sure they got their ducks in a row before they come. I mean, let's say you didn't before. I mean, you've been doing this for years. And so I'm sure you put a lot of effort into it, but to basically make sure that you got everything spelled out on what your reasoning was. I mean, I, I, I really appreciate that. That's probably the best report I've ever got off of the compensation board.
I agree.
And so I, I mean, I, I feel like I've got a pretty good understanding of what your thinking was. And uh, I guess that the board will have to decide on. You know, I, I'm feeling pretty good about that report. I guess I didn't, like especially the Johnston County numbers versus ours now, you know, since we've just recently had a.
Yeah, that's.
No, it's not. But back in twenty twenty one, you know, they've been growing. So I talked to them back then. And even when I called them, she said, oh, we've got more than that. So.
Significant growth. And it is a growing community, but that's, I mean, that's, if you did your, you know, it sounds like your, your research was pretty diligent on numbers. I mean, and you, so you use the counties. You know, the only part that ever really bothers me is it's just population we're taking into account. It's none of the other factors. But I suspect they're, they want us to look at that. I suspect that's the, you know, um, when I talked to Holt about it, way back when it came out that first year, I mean, that was kind of it, the way he said. And I do, I do, in that email, you know, when it was talking about, you guys just need to evaluate it on the populations of these normal ones and and, and set that number and then it's up to us to do the rest. So I mean, I think that if you found your numbers to be pretty adequate, I have no reason to, to doubt what you did. Pretty good.
Yep, very good.
Anybody else have any? Shouldn't we take any info from Oliver?
That's up to you.
No, you guys want to hear. That's what I'm asking.
Well, I miss more people here than, than most have been waiting for. Appears to be this item.
This item on the list, yeah.
I, I, I feel obligated to speak up. Uh, Ted gave a great report. I agree. I agree with ninety five, ninety seven percent of what he said. He was very accurate in his recitation of what happened at the meeting to the board. I especially agree with this comment about seven civic minded people got together to do their best due diligence, to do civic duty or free to the county. Uh, and Ted's been doing it for years. Um, probably a thankless job, uh, but he does a good job. Um, I would disagree with this um, conclusion that the law of the back of blue bill was followed to a T. Um, and my worry is that because we have seven civic minded, essentially volunteers. Um, and my worry is that because we have seven civic-minded, essentially volunteers, because the law is very clear, it doesn't, the original language of the law had the word "consider" in it. "The comp board shall consider these comparables." That language specifically struck out on the final bill. And it doesn't say "shall consider" anymore. It just says "shall set." Um, and the Johnston, Iowa, yeah, I mean, if that's in after, that, that was just going off memory from years ago. But my memory and those few that were there, uh, maybe you can correct me if it's wrong, but I think the sheriff's representative used the comp of Lieutenant Barelli down at the State Patrol, which is a soup advisor administrator at the State Patrol right down the street. Um, and that the number proposed by the sheriff's rep with that comp would have been around 22% increase of what he's making now. Uh, currently with this flat rate of $10,000 across the board, uh, for the sheriff, that'd be roughly 10 and a half percent. So, my worry is if we move forward, the board moves forward rather, if the Back the Blue language isn't satisfied, there could be legal ramifications.
They never said how long we had to get it there. That's the, what, you know, when we had the conversations back with Steve Holt, you know, on, because it was so vague on how they told us to do it. We, it never says "shall have it done this first year," or you have 10-year, you know, it didn't really say exactly when it has to be. And it also leaves, you know, uh, when I talked to Steve back then, he said there, you know, with the Johnston County, which is the, it's the city, the only city I could find back then that had a similar population, you know, the qualifications for that job had quite any, and, uh, Mr. Holt said that that you can't really compare that because they're not comparable positions based on the education. And that was back then. If anything changed, I don't know, but, um, everybody's been working around time to make this all be exactly the way it has to be. So.
And with all due respect to Mr. Holt, and this is no slight of any kind, but when we, when the courts interpret statutory language, the first thing they look at is whether or not it's ambiguous. If it's not ambiguous, they're not allowed by law to go search for what it might mean otherwise. And that's, we call it the rules of statutory construction. And with this language, in my opinion, it is very unambiguous. Now, Gene, you're absolutely right that there is no time limit set forth, but there also is no language in it that says the comparable to a police chief must have the same education requirements. And it says nothing about that either. And if the legislature felt that this law was unclear, if the, if the legislature felt that this law was giving counties a problem and needed to be cleaned up, they've had three years to do it, and they haven't. And so that signals to me that they don't have a problem with the law that they passed, or else they would go fix it. And so, again, and I think the check on, uh, the time limit, Gene, and this is again, I, I don't know what they were thinking, but there's nothing in the language of the bill that requires the board to accept whole cloth, the recommendation of the comp board. You always reserve the right. The law still, the board always reserves the right to tinker with the numbers. That is your right power of choice. But the language is very unambiguous about what the Compensation Board shall do when it comes to setting the sheriff's salary.
Can I ask you a question? Because where I, where I seen it to be unambiguous, where I seen it to be that way, is it, do we use an average of them suggestions that were like there? I mean, or do you just take the highest one and use that?
That is ambiguous, but.
Yeah.
The thing is, is Lieutenant Barelli of the three comps is the lowest count. It's not an average, it's not the highest, it's the lowest. Uh, according to the representative.
Of that organization, that they give us several different.
Of the state level people, but I mean, when, like Ted had brought up, he actually looked at the four, the two counties in front of us and the two counties behind us. You know, so that gave him four sets of numbers.
Sure.
And, you know, then I don't, and, and I, he can speak for himself as to what else he included into that, if anything. And maybe that would be a grounds where we'd have to look at something. I don't know. And, and I get, you know, when I, when you sent that email and it highlighted the, what we're, what, what the comp board was supposed to do, it did make sense to me that they were supposed to search that, that, that number, but I took it to be the average number in my mind as I'm reading it of, of positions.
I mean, it'd be.
And that's why I said it leaves some, you know, it just leaves some question in your mind. Well, where are we supposed to actually go here again? You know, because they didn't define it a little bit better, you know, I mean, see, hopefully you see where I'm.
No, I see what you're saying, but even if you're, if we take your approach, the number is still off.
Yeah. Well, and that could be, that's, yeah, that, that I'm not arguing. I'm just saying.
With Ted, taking the two above and the two below is a very reasonable approach. It makes perfect sense to me. Unfortunately, it's just not at all what the law says.
And that's why I wanted them to come drive out and go ahead and help them.
Maybe, maybe they should have put in law what that number is supposed to be there and how soon we're supposed to achieve that.
And then hope back.
I think the comp board acted in true faith and, and, and in regards to the law. There's always going to be arguments towards that. And I remember the first year with the 40%, they were comparing it to the police chief of the city of Dennison. At that time was maybe $80,000 or something. So, so at that time, we accomplished the comparable. So, uh, it just seemed like this goalpost could be moved anywhere on the football field, depending on what side of the stadium you're sitting on and what, so you want to. But I mean, that's what's unclear about it. I mean, you sit there and say it's black and white, but I read it and I think there's a lot of gray area in there.
DCI.
And I'm not, not questioning, I mean, you're, you should obviously probably have more black and white in it than my gray, because I mean, that's your profession, it's Collins. So I'm just.
Well, if I may offer, the gray that you offer is on a different area of the law. It's on a different bit of the language of the blue, of the Back the Blue bill. The part that's unambiguous to me reads as follows. "In setting the salary of the county sheriff, the county compensation board shall set the sheriff's salary to the following comparables." Now, the three comparables they list, DCI administrators, State Patrol administrators, and police chiefs of similar size to the county, um, there is some gray area on, is it an average? Is it the highest? Is it the lowest? Is it some random number in between? Totally agree with you guys that that's the gray area. But the preceding statement about "shall set" under these parameters, I mean, you can argue what the parameters are and the gray area in the parameters, but I don't think it's arguable that the legislature set parameters.
So judging by what Ted said, do you believe that he, that, that the board actually worked to achieve that? I mean, obviously hindsight's 20-20 always, but, uh, I mean, I, to me, it looks like with the research that he just, he defined that they did, I mean, I think that he was trying to define that mark.
And I'm not, I'm not saying that the board, the Compensation Board didn't.
Yeah.
I'm just saying that the legislature set parameters, and it doesn't appear to me that the parameters were followed as it comes to the sheriff's salary.
I gotta ask you, did you, after you read Back the Blue law, do you feel you, that the Compensation Board missed requirements?
Let me answer that by saying, first, yes, I do believe the Compensation Board can work. What, what information we have, what we were given, we were giving the salaries of departments for the other 98 counties across the state that we could compare with. If, uh, you want to come up with, or somebody wants to come up with comparable police chiefs and state employees, uh, so was stated in the Back the Blue law for us to consider, that's fine. But we didn't have that information, and we, we shouldn't just assume that these people are getting X amount of dollars. We can only make our decision on the information that we receive. And the information we receive is for other counties comparable salaries for each department.
So the sheriff's representative didn't have any other numbers for you to actually look at?
No.
That's not my recollection. I was there. And, and maybe I'm wrong. I mean, Steve was there, maybe he has a better recollection.
She only had one. Whatever recommendation Jim wrote on the sheet and gave her, that's the only recommendation she has.
Right. But didn't she say this is Lieutenant Barelli's salary in the State Patrol? That's what.
I think she had one specific, but that was the only one.
Right.
She didn't list, okay, and that's what was disturbing on my part, because I wanted to see a list of 20 people that, and, because you know they didn't make all the same money.
Yeah.
You know, so on one side of the goalpost, like Kyle said, maybe it is $125,600. Though on the other side, maybe it's $108, maybe it's $105. We never seen that. And, and that's what I think Ted's saying. Is the sheriff rep, Marilyn said, what was put in front of her is that we had one, we had one, uh.
Yeah, I agree with that. That's a fair point. There was one number put forward.
One number.
Mr. Mulbar, are you excited?
Question as far as when you're looking at comparables, and I, I do feel like the comparables are very gray. And it's no time when I said all those things we just discussed. Is there anything in the language that separates the population of a county, whether it's incorporated or unincorporated?
The only language when it comes to.
I guess where I'm going with that, I think.
Taking the city of Dennison out of the population, but it doesn't say that.
So, no. And they only mention a population.
Typically, we typically always consider the entire population, but if you're starting to get into gray areas of comparables, or now, could you, or just compare truly what is represented in an unincorporated area versus incorporated? Or just, I'm just snowballing here.
You know, like Shelby County has Harvin now that they're patrolling because they don't have a police force anymore. So, did that increase their duties? Sure. It would increase their duties and make their job harder. Which, so, but we, we don't have Dennison separated out of our numbers at least.
So I guess even with that not being spelled out in Back the Blue bill, you could technically argue that, well, if it's only unincorporated areas, totally change the parameters of what's comparable.
If, if that were, I mean, I would say, with all due respect, Mr. Mulbar, I would say no. Uh, the plain language, uh, indicates that the parameters are set, and it shall be set within certain parameters. The only mention of population is comparables to city police chiefs employed by cities of similar population to the population of the county. There's no mention of corking off, uh, individual towns' police forces to not have that count towards the population. And that's a fair point about Shelby County, and that's something that Shelby County has to wrestle with when they deal with setting their share.
My own personal opinion, it's a bad bill. It has a lot of gray areas.
Big time.
But a tough one. Um.
Do, do, do we have 28Es with surrounding counties? This is probably more for our board's interest than the comp board, but do we have 28Es with the other county?
So aid and law enforcement from other counties? No.
We don't have to have that. I mean, like our fire departments.
Law enforcement can operate statewide.
Okay. I, I didn't know that for sure. I just, that was a question I had the other night, and I forgot to ask anybody. So, thank you.
So there's not really another city that has the same population of Crawford County anymore, is that?
Well, back to Ted and Steve's point, if there is, I mean, it certainly wasn't given at the comp board.
Yeah. And I remember when Johnston was the same as Crawford County, but it's grown, and so it's no longer in the mix of things to look at. So.
Well, it certainly looks to me, and I'm not a judge, that's for all five of us to figure it out.
No, we're not.
It certainly looks to me like the comp board actually did execute their duties in good faith.
In good faith.
And there, there, there is a little question there. I mean, about the one number that, you know, the sheriff's representative did bring forth, but it, it appears to me that they operated in good faith with what they, what, what they had before then. And, you know, it's like, like it was brought out here, this is probably one, whenever you're dealing with somebody's pay, it's always a touchy issue. I mean, let's face the fact, everybody's always wants as much as they can get. We watch the NFL every week, right? But the, uh, I, I think that you guys probably, most likely did an excellent job. Did you have something else that you wanted to ask? Please do, before I run along and be further.
I, I wasn't going to ask. I guess I was just going to state that when we had heard that they were doing the $10,000 recommendation and reading the law, when it says, um, "to professional comparable salaries to professional law enforcement administrators," they don't define who that is, and command officers of the State Patrol, who are command officers of the State Patrol? And then the Division of Criminal Investigation of the Department of Public Safety, that you can actually go on a website and click down and see every person who's paid in the state of Iowa. And if you go across there, I mean, I don't know, but if a sergeant is that command officer, but here's a sergeant making 97, 864, a lieutenant, 116, 542, a sergeant, 105, 476, a sergeant, 102, 419, a sergeant, 96, 803. So, to me, you, you don't, they're not, you know, they're not told specifically, "Hey, this is who you have to compare it to." And so, you know, when you look about, um, when you talk about professional law enforcement administrators, so I just looked in the Department of Public, uh, Public Safety, the Department of Corrections. I mean, here's a correctional supervisor making 87, 734, public service manager, 96, 512, correctional supervisor, 75, 441, a deputy superintendent, 121, executive officer, 87,000. So, I mean, there's just a lot of ranges in there. So, to me, when you decided to get it to 105, basically a salary to 105, I'm like, yeah, that's comparable to all of those numbers. Some it's higher than, some it's less than, but it's meeting that criteria when I see that. And so, when it's, when Colin says "shall set," I think you did set, you set his salary. So it is comparable to what the law says as I read that law. Now, because there's certainly, to me, it's a lot of things that they don't specifically tell you, you have to compare to this. So I think it's met personally.
I do too.
He did all that while we were sitting here talking. I'm pretty impressed. Did you have something, Mr. Elmer?
Yeah, I, I would like to say something. I've been on the comp board for quite a few years. And I, I would say, and I think Ted will agree, it was probably the most in-depth research by, we had a couple of new members, and I was very impressed with what they did. Um, what Corey Turner did, I mean, it was, it was, and he brought it forward, and it was impressive. I mean, he had done his homework, okay? Everything that he had given to him, he researched. And not only him, but the rest of the board members all cut, and, and the, the problem I have, if we have to reconvene, you know, what you're talking, they, they want to reconvene and get that 21 or 22% increase for the sheriff, all that's going to do is hurt the rest of the elected official's salary. Because if you guys get that on your desk, because I've been there.
Oh, yeah.
You get a 22% increase on your desk, you're not going to approve it. So you're going to drop it, and it has to be the same amount percentage-wise across the board. So what's going to happen to the other elected officials? They're going to get whacked. They're going to get whacked way worse than if it was a straight across-the-board recommendation. That's how I see it. I mean, and, and what I've seen in 16 years sitting in that chair, that's exactly what will happen.
I'd, I'd like to bring something up. Obviously, $10,000 scares the heck out of me, but I, I would like to say something. Ted called me before they had this meeting, maybe a week before, would you say? And he asked, what's the, what's, what does the board, uh, you know, I mean, what, what are we, what are we kind of looking for? I said, "We're looking for a fair number that comes right at it for a change." You know, I mean, we obviously wanted to go with the dollar amount. That's something that Kyle brought up my first year here, when I, him and I were in negotiation. Uh, that would start to balance the scales a little bit, where, you know, then you got more room to adjust a dollar versus percentage, because percentage can really out, you know, can, can skew the numbers the, I wouldn't say the wrong way, but it could be a difficult way, you know? And that's what I told Ted, is I said, "Just, just bring us something that's, that's actually positive for us to look at, where we don't look at it and go, oh my God, how do we got to, how are we going to have to cut this?" As opposed to, "Hey, how can we make this work?" You know? And I mean, like I said, $10,000 scares the hell out of me, because you just nailed this whole second floor with the big raise at that point, and that's, that's scary for our budget, especially this year. And, but, it is straight across there. I mean, he, he looked to me like he tried to fit the sheriffs in there. And, you know, when you look at our public, or our elected officials compared to other counties out there, you know, they're, they're, there was probably, they're, we're behind. We're lacking behind. I mean, when we're in the middle of the pack, which I think we're, you know.
Forty-third.
Yeah, there you go. Thank you. Forty-third. And, and then we're on 82nd on Peyton. Now, the problem is, is that only tells us salary. It doesn't tell us benefits, and Jean, she's good at reminding me of the benefits that are out there and that there's, there's pretty good numbers out there, you know? I mean, as far as, we're doing pretty good. I mean, I think some counties probably have maybe a better program and lesser pay. You know, there's different things to look at, but I just asked him to bring something that is really right in there, and I didn't ask for a same number for everybody. You know, I didn't, I don't think I got to anything that asked for a specific. that is really right in there that we, and I didn't ask for a same number for everybody, you know, I didn't, I don't think I got to anything that asked for a specific thing. I just asked for, you know, give, bring us, you know, like Carol this year, what did they have, day three point two?
Three point two across.
I mean, instead of some inflated number because the supervisors are gonna cut it, bring us something that we don't have to cut, you know, bring us something logical. You know, and 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 like I said, ten thousand still scares me, but when you look at some of them numbers, I get it. So I mean, to me, he brought us something logical from the board, you know, and and I appreciate that. And I want to say it. I appreciate the effort that you guys put forth this year and and every year, mind you, but you know, when I heard some of the things that came out of that room where you guys really did some good research, I heard Corey's name mentioned, obviously, and some others, actually. So I mean, I appreciate that. I don't want you to ever think that that I I I don't even think that Colin would say that that, you know, that he doesn't appreciate everything you did there. I mean, I I I get his point. I mean, he's looking at the things and he's his jobs to try to keep us out of trouble here in the county, so I I get that too. But I also do believe that you brought us a a good straight at us number. So did you have something else?
Yeah, the only thing I wanted to say, Ty, is is that there was bigger numbers thrown around. But those reps that mentioned those numbers said the same thing you just said. You know, if we throw a big number out there, all it's gonna do is upset the board of supervisors saying, hey, you know, we can't afford fifteen thousand. Because that was one of the numbers brought out and they and and so in the discussion of the roundtable that Ted had for us, it is we kind of come to a conclusion, we wanted to bring a number forward that that you probably would try to adjust a little. But at least it was a fair number according to the comparables. And 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 that's where it landed on every one of those.
Okay.
Yep, I did too.
I'm pretty much like what you said, Ted.
Thanks, Steve.
Thanks for the cash, Mel.
Yeah, thanks for the cash.
No, if you're if you're curious on the on the ranks, I mean, Crawford County population rank is forty-sixth. Our sheriff's salary is eighty-one, supervisor's salary, we rank eighty-nine, auditor eighty-seven, recorder eighty-four, treasurer eighty-five, county attorney thirty-four is where we rank.
Which could tell you that we've had a lot of very conservative.
That's just salary. That's just salary.
Yeah, that's a lot of conservative boards, but like it, you know, and like you said, it's just, we don't know for sure what they're, we don't know how many people work in those departments. They may have larger. You know what? Now, look at Shelby County now as far as using the sheriff for an example, they he's man, I think it's seventeen deputies he's he's managing now. So obviously, that's that's a hell of a lot larger chore to deal with every week, you know, and and.
But the city Harlan no longer has a chief of police, they have to.
We, yeah, but he's got all of that, so, yeah, I agree. And so that, I mean, I I get that, see, but my point was we don't know what everybody's responsibilities are with these set salaries out there. And I mean, I'm not advocating one way or the other yet, but that's for us to sit and discuss as a board. I'm just saying that there's so many things to take into consideration and I think that I think that your your board. I feel anyway that you you worked hard to find that number and I and I'm comfortable that you did do it. I mean, if, you know, at some point, we just gotta quit being afraid to make good decisions around here, you know, I mean, sure, any day we're here, we could probably be doing something wrong, but we're doing the best we can for our taxpayers in Crawford County and our workforce in the in the court system, in the courthouse system, so. I appreciate that. I mean, please pass that along to your your fellow board members that I really appreciate and I'm sure.
Hopefully, they're watching.
Well, hopefully, they're watching, but I really do appreciate what you've done, you know.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very, very much.
Merry Christmas.
Yeah, Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas to you.
Okay, so it's a discuss and take action. Do we uh at this point? No action required at this point? Do you, you don't wanna? Okay. To accept that board, the board's number.
Right.
Should we ever take action or vast accept it?
I don't know. Just discuss and take action. So I'm trying to figure out what we're supposed to ask.
You have to decide if you're gonna accept it or you have, you're right. So we're not at this point ready, you need to discuss amongst yourselves to see what budgets.
Yeah, I think I don't, I just think no action taken today would be a.
Able.
Especially with all the extra controversy and where we're gonna ask them.
I mean, if the board chooses to.
As an option.
The board chooses to reconvene, then any action today would be.
Green chair.
Three of them have already asked for reconvene.
So. Three people?
There's no sense.
Three departments?
No sense taking that.
Three, three council members.
Three of us.
Seven, three of your, okay, three of your board members, okay.
Right.
Pat, Pat asked for reconvene.
So no action.
No action.
Okay, well, we're we're gonna go with no action at this time then and do a little bit more mulling around the, and Craig, thank you for the numbers there.
It would be nice to have, if you could find that, because I think you you mentioned it, Ty, that the biggest concern is the cost of these departments to the taxpayers of Crawford County. It's not so much the salary is a little bit of that, but most of it is what's the cost of the departments. So it'd be nice to compare costs of departments to other counties our size. What are they paying for a, you know, recorder's office?
Office.
Uh auditor's office, the treasurer's office, what are the, what is their cost?
I'll I'll try to find that out.
Okay, I couldn't find that, so.
I'll call.
Okay.
There are a lot of the treasurer's offices, some of them don't have CDL training, some of them.
Right, right.
So those numbers skewed a little there.
Absolutely, you're correct.
And we do have just about everything in our treasury.
Yeah, you know, where you have to drive quite a few miles to take a CDL test, but you cannot come to Dennis.
Exactly.
So I mean, some of those numbers, if you don't know all of what.
And if you give the numbers, they still might be skewed.
Yeah.
Yep, they may be a department of three, but they don't do CDLs and they don't do, you know.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And they got a hundred thousand dollar less budget.
Right.
Somebody said, well, they don't have a hundred thousand. Well, yeah, they are.
Other thing is how many more ten thousand dollar year raises does this equate to?
Yeah.
Because I mean, obviously, it's more than just the elected officials that this will be passed on.
Yeah.
It'll be, it'll be like, you know, you get ten thousand dollar year rate, you get ten, we all get ten thousand. I mean, those are the things that we gotta weigh in too. And it sounds like they might reconvene anyways, so let's just.
Yeah.
Let's move on.
Let's stay. Okay, well, and I thank everybody for their input on this. I think it was invaluable. I, this is the first really good discussion that we've had openly about this in my three years of doing this. I mean, we've had discussions, but they've never been quite this detailed. Ted brought a great report. Uh Colin's input was invaluable and and having Mr. Olmer here to add his perspective from the board meeting. I, so I actually, I really appreciate what everybody did here today. And because we do record decent, we've got a nice fan club today, we uh we uh actually, the people are getting to see what we're dealing with, you know, I mean, and I think that's important, you know, and obviously, we got the media here, I'm sure, but that might be mentioned in the paper, but I would assume anyway. So anyway, uh next on the agenda would be citizens' input.
I'll just add to piggyback off your point. I think the compensation board had the same feeling that that it was a good compensation until the end, there was some pickups at the end.
Sure.
But until then, I think everyone felt that the meeting went well and it was a lot of good stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah, when I sure wouldn't, you know, especially when we can find a group of people that put that kind of effort to that particular board, I'd sure hate to discourage anybody from wanting to be on that. You know, I mean, I know I've heard Sherry talk about her struggles that she has to find people sometimes and and to be able to find somebody like Corey that brings in a great contribution to the, you know, to the effort, like you brought up, no pay. You know, I mean, we, you know, I I'm kind of hoping that they decide on their own without us having to, you know, poke the poke the bear, so to speak. But so long as we don't have to say something to them, I think if they would convene again, we'll work with that. If they don't, I mean, I don't know what to say at this point, but uh we'll 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 work on it some more. And I I appreciate what they did. I think they did a great job this, you know. Anyway, uh citizens' input else. Uh you two were back here. Did you have some input for the board or you were just, okay. Mr. M, Mr. Munt, did you have anything?
Uh the water needs study um discussion, what is Joe Valley's role in order?
Well, Joe and 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 Jay Ford actually began, they were, they were concerned about water needs clear back in two thousand one. And this is kind of my uh getting into it after, obviously, I was a part of that in two thousand one, so why they, you know, Joe, Joe's obviously an you know, an environmental conservationist type person. I mean, he's he's concerned about those things and and uh that's all the messaging that I'm getting, you know, he's worried about our water needs. You know, you, if you talk to Rory, he'll he'll tell you where we're where we're sitting with our wells out here outside of town and and we actually help supply. And I don't quote me on the numbers because obviously I didn't write them down, but I believe it's like thirty percent of our water goes to actually help western, you know, west central, the rural water supply, so I mean, it would be more than us affected. And because the Bueller is kind of like the Bueller Stream now and like the soldiers, the Bablin Brook and I mean, we don't have a lot of water that's being held back, so there's not as much being absorbed into our aquifers. So that's, Joe's concern was is, you know, that they obviously did a study in twenty twenty, in two thousand five where they actually looked for different places to put reservoirs in the event that that would be something that would help us with our water supplies in the future. And I I didn't bring any of that stuff with me, but I've actually looked at all the different areas that they thought would be good for a a reservoir if necessary. And the DNR actually said that that's what we were gonna need is a good water study to present to them for any grant possibility that are out there. Right now, there's actually a number of things that we can apply for, but uh Joe's, Joe's was just kind of spearheading and keeping this thing moving, keeping it alive. I mean, he's, he's not a you know, a self-appointed anything, but he wanted to make sure it stayed moving, so he's been just talking to all of us that have interest in in preserving it. So just another good citizen of Crawford County, I guess you could say him and Jay have done a lot, you know, along the way to help with this study or to get to where we're at with this part of the study.
Okay. I know Jay was on the NRCS back in two thousand one, so I don't know, I'm not, I don't remember Joe wasn't on, I, maybe that's where their commitment or whatever started with that.
Yeah, could be. Goes back a little further than I was involved in the local area government stuff, so. But I mean, I I think it's certainly something that we gotta be lucky with.
Conservation.
They say water will be the new gold or oil of the future, so I mean, we're we're all, like I brought up at them meeting before, we're out buying water. I remember when I was a kid, you never said you'd be buying a bottle of water. You know, now we're worried about all those things because of bringing in water from everywhere. Actually, my trucks bring home water from Cleardown in Texas and stuff. You know, back up to a distribution point in Kansas City and bring it to Cherokee, so, you know, water's got some value. So we want to make sure we always got plenty. Anyway, any other, any other questions? You have more answer there than you were looking for, I'm sure, but that's just me.
That's okay.
I do have a question for Dan because last week at the grocery store, running to your counterpart and she was questioning the county. And then I said, there's some Iowa code that we have to compare to as far as get a publication, an official publication. And I don't know if you guys have been talking about that more or not, and I said, I'm not guessing, I said, this is the criteria that has to be made for an Iowa code.
Yeah, I think we're definitely moving forward, some church names and I gotta use stands.
That's part of it, can't be a free.
I mean, if you guys, if you hit the point where we can make an official publication, I don't think we would have a problem doing that moving forward.
Yeah, I remember and stuff, so we'd have to make it to get there.
Yep.
Yeah.
We could still publicize with them, but it doesn't meet our requirements.
No, correct.
Or publication at this.
For an Iowa code, yeah, it cannot be an official publication for an Iowa code unless X, Y, Z or that, so.
How many?
They're more required based on our population as to how many papers we have to put our notices in.
It's SASCO circulation.
And who we have to do it, we have to do it with the person, with the newspaper that has the most.
Has to have.
We gotta meet so many subscriptions.
A measurable amount of households that it reaches by uh description is kind of what it's gonna be. Just furthering up the last time.
Probably another.
Two or three years ago, maybe you're delivering, maybe you're from the Iowa Newspaper Association, like Dave said, you can voluntarily do it.
Oh, yeah.
Right, we're still gonna be helping.
Yeah, given the fact that newspapers aren't what they will be.
Right.
Why spend money? You'll get the number of subscriptions.
It's hard for.
One of the.
Our money just.
Exactly.
Okay, does anybody in Zoom land have anything to brought, be brought for the board? There's a lot of people up there today. If you raise your hand, I can sure call on you. Mary, I don't know who that is. Connect to audio.
Audio, so maybe she wants to say something.
Mary, are you connecting to audio for a reason?
Mary who?
I don't know. Nope, she just went. Mary, could you uh let us know, we're we're trying to keep track of who everybody is in the room and on Zoom so that it's in our minutes. Could you uh let us know who you are, maybe in a message or? And see anybody else have anything? Control?
Yeah.
And who is control? I guess I would assume that was Michelle, but she's still up there.
Oh.
Mary's trying. Okay. Well, please remember that in the future, anybody that might be up there in Zoom land, we're actually, if you could have your name, like Erin, Erin Holtz, we've got her name up there hole so that we can write it down so we can have everything in our minutes.
Erin, we're not muting them, right?
They're in control of their own destiny.
Yeah. Gotcha.
Yep.
She's trying to connect to audio. Fussing with her. I have a computer like that at home too.
Like Maddie did.
Is there anything else to be brought before the board before I call?
Motion, we adjourn?
Motion was made by Mr. Gozar, seconded by Ms. Hayden. All in favor, state so by saying aye.
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 All opposed, no. Have a merry, merry Christmas, everybody.
We have doors that are decorated and part of a contest.
Well, that's right.
So anybody that wants to judge the doors.
Yeah, we should have.
How do you what?
How do you?
However you want.